Republic of what stands one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. And number two amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments? I did not see any, just looking to make sure, otherwise we will let them stand as distributed. And I need to make sure I got a little bit of feedback. By the way, we are full strength, we've got two commissioners via Zoom. We've all worn our masks into the building and are here socially distanced in the, in the room. Let's move to item number three, approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2020 County Board, Three Rivers Park District Board Meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Otherwise, again, we're doing the roll call voting. Deb is ready to go.
Commissioner Weckman-Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Excuse me, moving on to item number four, that approved the amendments of the September 15th, 2020 County Board Meeting. Are there any changes, additions, deletions? Otherwise, what is your pleasure there?
I'll move them.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on that, otherwise Deb take it away.
Commissioner Weckman-Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Now we're moving on to item number five, recognition of interested citizens. This is an opportunity for anyone to come speak to the board, five minutes. We've got a few, it's going to be a busy day, we're going to get our ratings up. I see someone ready to go. Who is this masked gentleman? I recognize this fellow, but with a mask, I'm not 100% sure, I'm 100% sure.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the county board, I'm Gary Shelton. I'm a Spring Lake Township resident. And from the county strategic plan to the 2040 comprehensive plan, the county board's goal has been consistent, making Scott County a safe, healthy, and livable community for its residents. One of the county's primary objectives has been to ensure that all children have the opportunity for a healthy and successful life. And tactically, the county has been working with the schools and parents to ensure that the needs of all children within the county are met through increased early screening at age three, and to promote early literacy through reading skills development. Randy and Peggy Herman, along with Linda and myself, have been working with Leslie and Jake on a project to advance this goal through the purchase of several hundred Kindle Fire readers. These devices have exceptional functionality to help younger kids with their reading skills. The Kindle Fires immersion reading functions make it possible for the device to read along with kids, highlight and define words that kids may be struggling with, and make reading enjoyable. The devices have protective covers to make them durable, come with a two-year warranty, and will provide kids with free access to thousands of books in multiple languages, while at the same time allowing parents to control access to the types of materials their children read, and monitor their activities through a very interactive parental dashboard. The library hopes to partner with the school districts to use these devices to increase early screening and development of reading skills at the youngest age group, so that by grade three, children are reading at grade level. Today, I would like to present the county with this check for $20,000 for the purchase of these Kindle Fire readers, and hope that this helps to set a model and push and advance the literacy of children throughout Scott County. So with that, Mr. Chair, I can just give this check to Jake? Jake?
Thank you very much.
It's actually good if you cash it this week. You never know about next week, but it's good today.
I will cash it.
So.
So it's good, yeah, that is unbelievable. That's unbelievable. Really appreciate that.
And with that, I'm off to Rochester because Linda will have her kidney transplant on Friday. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. And do we need a quick picture? Is there a quick?
Yeah, we need a.
A quick picture?
Quick.
Because that's an example of someone putting their money where their mouth is right there as we cover ours up.
You guys stand.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
And Jake has an example for us.
Right.
It's awesome.
Very nice.
Yeah, that's.
So that's in the picture too.
I can attest that they work well, because I've given them to my great nieces and nephews, and they've worked exceptionally well at improving their reading skills.
That's awesome. Now we just got to wait for the camera.
We're waiting for somebody grabbing a phone.
So it, it, they'll come wrapped? I know you said something to the case.
They'll come right in the box.
Nice. But I mean, that's the case, it comes in heavy duty?
It is, they're very heavy duty, they're very, they're very kid-proofed.
Yeah.
You could drop them and they'll be okay.
Yeah, that's incredible.
Drop them and they'll be okay.
Thank you and.
Where were those when my kids were having?
Oh, man, I was thinking the same thing for myself. Where is it for me?
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Hey, for my photo, why don't you have the IT guys Photoshop something out of stock photos that looks pretty good?
We're going to have your face on a stick.
Claire has the camera for Ertz, but this will work just perfect. Dave over to the right a little bit.
Yeah, to the left or this?
The other right, there you go.
Yeah, all right.
That's better.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Smiling? Yeah, we'll be praying for a good time in Rochester, a safe time.
Thank you, Gary. We'll be back in about a month.
All right.
And like I said, Tom, don't worry, we already voted.
I'd worry.
I'm worried.
All right, why don't, why don't you, I know we've got a couple folks on Zoom, but you're in person and, and so you've got five minutes.
Okay, is it okay if I take my mask off to say?
Yeah, yeah, we're socially distanced, so that's awesome. Maybe just give us a name and address and take it away.
All right, good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Amy Dohmeyer. I am also speaking on behalf of my husband, Steve. We reside at 4215 Hunter's Lane, so we're in the Hunter's Crest subdivision on the corner of two and 23. And we're behind north, it's my backyard, to Doug Schiefer's proposed heliport, helipad, however, whatever you want to call it. We're passionate about this. This is our home, this is our investment. We just want to be heard, you know, we've been working with staff, but we're taking it to the next level. We, we, you know, like, I can't express how important this is to us, you know? We're losing sleep over this, this is our investment. And so I just want to go over, I know some conditions have changed, I will acknowledge that, and I do appreciate that some conditions have changed, but I still have concerns about the conditions as they're written. For example, we have asked for that northern flight route to be removed more than once, and it's not just me. It is not just me, there are nine homes in our, in our area, my neighbor Elizabeth that you guys have heard from, she's directly east of me, she's asked for that northern flight route to be removed. We're homeowners, we experienced this last August when he flew over our house, how disruptive it is, how loud it is, our house shook. You know, I, I built my home there 15 years ago, I wouldn't have built there if I knew there was going to be a helicopter operating in my backyard. Again, we've been on record, you have letters from us, emails, the planning commission has it, that we don't support having that northern flight route. And I get the perception is that it's removed, but it's still loud under weather conditions, so it's still allowed, it's not removed. If you would watch back the September 12th Planning Commission meeting, his neighbors are for it, many of them are. This helicopter doesn't even go over his own house, but no flight route was proposed to the east. When we've asked staff why, it's because it affects too many homeowners, and we have to remember some people in their neighborhood are against it. Well, what about us? We're, we're the same, we're homeowners and we're against it, so we really want that northern flight route removed. And I would say one of the biggest reasons that it should be removed is they were on record saying, there's three proposed flight routes, but we only need two. So you have a west and you have a south, and he should be encouraged to use that south route, it affects the least amount of people. Secondly was the flight times. I will acknowledge that staff changed it to 7:00 AM in the morning, I'm grateful for that, because as it was written, he would have been able to fly out before 5:00 AM on the longest day of the year. I, in talking to Tom and Leslie before the meeting, I will acknowledge that 7:00 PM probably wasn't a good sunset time for us, because it actually gave him more than a half hour past sunset certain days of the year. Maybe we could acknowledge that in the summertime, it'd be 7:00 PM, because last August, it was 9:30 at night. I have an hour commute to work every morning, I'm in bed by nine, it woke us up. And once you're up, you're up, because it is, I can't explain it, it's not just noise, our house vibrated, it shook. You know, you can go out there and do some research on how does helicopter use affect sleep patterns and quality of life. I know that Rex did a lot of speaking at that planning commission meeting, but I encourage you to do your, do your own research too, and just take a look at what's out there when it comes to helicopter noise. And we also have concerns about the days and numbers of operations. I will acknowledge, they changed it from 80 to 50. We got a letter from Doug before we came to the planning commission saying, I doubt I need more than 50 operations. So we're back to what we thought we had to start with. Ideally, zero operations, but I understand that you guys have to look at the CUP as a whole and follow what's in your code, I get that. But these conditions, you guys get to decide what's reasonable, and actually, 50 is 100, because an operation is a takeoff and it's a landing. So we're at 100, we're looking at this happening in our neighborhood up to twice a week then, give or take, right? So we asked for no Sundays, give us a day where we're not going to have a helicopter. I still think it's reasonable, because he gets to fly six other days of the week. And he has a, they didn't, they didn't budge on the condition that four times a year, he gets to use it as much as he wants, not even three, it stayed at four. Keep in mind, this, this is my backyard, this is my home, if you come visit us, you would stand in my backyard and think, wow, I would never imagine a helicopter in your backyard. Where are these located in Minnesota right now? They're part of medical facilities. There's not private ones, this isn't normal, this isn't normal to have in your backyard. Had I chose to buy a house in Richfield or the Minneapolis area, Bloomington, where that, where an airplane goes over me, yep, that's on me, they were there first. I was here first, I want you to take into consideration, we have concerns about the days and numbers of operations. One of the things we asked for as a neighborhood was to have the Scott County Planning Board review this. I'm told, yep, it's covered, but if you read the condition, it currently states, the conditional use permit may be annually reviewed. So is it maybe, maybe not? Maybe we don't want to deal with this, it this year, maybe next year we will? I need assurance that that's going to happen, that's important to us. I think the word shall needs to be included in that condition and take the word may out. There is no doubt, when this is up and operating, you're not just going to hear from our neighborhood, you're going to hear from people in the surrounding area that had no idea, oh, it was going to be this bad, or wow, now it's every week, this is different than the few times we heard it last summer. We also had requested that when the new pad is installed on the new lot, that it be installed as far south as possible. I get there's setbacks, but come on, there's nobody else out there. I think if, as far away as you can push it from residential homes, especially our neighborhood, I think that's a benefit to us. And I think my biggest, my biggest ask, and I feel like I'm throwing my pride to the side and I'm begging you, come out and do a test flight, come out and experience it. I don't know that Doug should be the one operating the helicopter, because I, I don't know, I don't know if you can manipulate what you do in a takeoff and a landing, I have no idea, I'm not a pilot. But I want you to come out and experience it. If you can come out and stand in my backyard, or Elizabeth's front yard, our cul-de-sac, our street, my four-season porch, my neighbor's living room, and say, that's not that bad, what are they worried about? I'll let it go, but I want you, I beg of you to come out and experience this and say, you know what? They're right, we should eliminate the flight to the north, these people are impacted by this use. I've never experienced anything like it, I live on County Road Two, yes, I'm right by the corner of two and 23, so I have car traffic, I have motorcycles, hey, we own a motorcycle, so I, motorcycle's allowed, I get it, there's Jake breaking every day, I can mitigate that, I can close my windows, I can have the TV on, I can have white noise on, you know, and part of it, that's kind of noise you can tune out, I can't mitigate the helicopter noise, there is no way to mitigate that. My house shook when he flew over it. And you might argue, it's 10 minutes of inconvenience, but when it happens to you and you're sitting there, how did this happen to me? That's all I can think, when I'm, I'm at home at night enjoying dinner and he would go over, how did this happen? Or it's 9:30 at night and you shot out of bed because your house is shaking. It, this is just not something normal, and it's the first time you're doing it in Scott County, so I'm asking you to just pause. It's my understanding and talking to Marty, that the 60 days goes well until the end of November? Let's just pause, let's do this right. We're, I'm, that's all I'm asking, I just want you to take the time, come out and listen to it, come out and experience it, because I think it's different to say noise is noise when it's on paper and telling, telling me it's a healthy level of noise in comparison to actually experiencing it. And I, I said it before the meeting, would you, how would you feel, this is your home and this is going into your backyard? You would be like me, you'd be fighting, you'd be passionate, you'd be wanting change. And now put yourself further into my home, I have the high line, power lines to the north and the west, and now I have a helipad in my back, in the south of my property. So I've got three strikes against my house. And I, we're just really passionate about this, we want to be heard, we, we don't know what to do anymore, I could go out and hire an attorney, what are they going to do? Because by law, you have to look at this, you have to approve it, but you just need to make reasonable, reasonable conditions. So think about, what would you think was reasonable if this was in your backyard? And what would you think was reasonable after you experienced it? That's all we're asking for. I'm not going to come up here and attack Doug's character, I'm going to assume he's a wonderful pilot, because he has a family. I, I don't doubt anything he's doing with that helicopter, I want you to keep in mind what it's doing to us, and just think of us as homeowners. Tom, I appreciate that we've reached out too many times, I know I reached out to Barb, we've made some phone calls, my husband's talked to Leslie, some of my neighbors, I think, have talked to Leslie. We're, we're not going away, we just want to be heard, and I, I don't know what else to do, because I'm not promised, from what I've been told, future public comment at a planning commission meeting or at this board meeting, and that's why I came, came today, I'm sorry I came in person, I should have did it by Zoom, we're in the middle of a pandemic, but I, I just want to be heard, I appreciate the opportunity that I got to speak, I hope you guys really take into consideration, I'm a 19-year resident of Scott County, I've paid taxes, I've done, I've done my time, I wouldn't have built the house where I'm at had I known a helicopter was going to be in my backyard. So you've got to think about it, like, who's going to want that? Nobody wants it, but if it's going to be there, at least consider our concerns. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you for your passion, it's definitely on the front burner.
Thank you.
I believe we have one or two more Zoom, I believe. I see someone shaking their head there, it looks like a pastor, so we all better sit up straight, make sure we, you know, got a pastor in the room. So why don't you take it away?
All right, the Lord be with you, thanks for giving me some time today, my name is Ben Hilding, my wife Alicia and I are co-pastors at Holy Trinity Lutheran Church of New Prague, and we're also Scott County residents. And I just want to begin by saying thank you. This is a difficult year, especially for anybody in leadership, and sometimes we choose leadership, but in my experience, more often, leadership chooses us, and so I want to thank you for accepting that call to leave for everyone in the room, and the implications that adds on you personally as you seek to serve the common good. Today, I'd like to share my support for the Prairie Point Housing Project. Biblical scholar Barbara Brown Taylor recently wrote that anticipatory hope is not enough anymore. Participatory hope is the only kind that works right now. Participatory hope. And at Holy Trinity, this has been a hard year on us as a church. We've honored the Health Department guidelines, and we continue to meet primarily online. Our budget's down, people are frustrated, people are grieving, I've never been a part of so many contentious conversations in my life. But I'll say this, we are participating in hope. Despite our financial challenges, we are just about to complete a $500,000 addition to our church building with the primary purpose that it adds bathrooms with showers and a washer and dryer, so that we can better house families experiencing homelessness through the Families Moving Forward program from Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative. We are participating in hope. And while we are cutting staff hours, my wife's included, because of financial challenges for the church, as a church, we still raised an unbudgeted $15,000, the seed money, to fund one of these apartments at the Prairie Point project, 5,000 of which, I must say, came from the piggy banks of our Vacation Bible School kids. We are participating in hope. In addition, a church member of ours runs a local theater, which is struggling to get by, but they decided to have a fundraiser for Beacon as one of their trivia nights, and rather than pocketing the cash for themselves, which they could have, they gave over $1,000 to help people experiencing homelessness. And then a fourth grader, who's a member of our church named Taylor, she was moved to help people in need too, so in August, she sold masks, and she gave the proceeds to Beacon, which totaled more than $400, because she wanted to help somebody get a home. We are participating in hope. And even though the housing project is in Shakopee, we know that the families that stay at our church, that we have conversations with, that we eat with, through the Families Moving Forward program, this is where we'd like to help them have a sustainable home, because we just don't want them to have to go from church to church to church to church. These are families we know and care about. And one of our church members told me yesterday that she's a landlord for a family that did come out of the Families Moving Forward program, and she told me that these are the nicest and most polite kids that she's rented to, but there are months that their families simply can't pay their rent. And so she's the kind of landlord that is helping the family get by, but you and I know that not every family that is working out of homelessness is so fortunate. So as Christians, we follow Jesus's lead to open our hearts to those who are hurting and crying for help. And I know that going forward, a lot of healing and reconciliation is needed in our communities in our country. But I do believe that it all starts with the home. And so today, my ask is for a capital commitment from Scott County for $900,000 towards Prairie Point. There are 30 churches in Scott and Carver County as part of Beacon Collaborative, and we know that Beacon knows how to leverage this commitment 15-fold. They know how to provide the kind of wraparound services to help people get on their feet again, they know how to participate in hope. So today, I'm here just to say we're doing the best we can, but we ask that you can do the best you can too, as we need to work together to do this, and we want to participate in hope with you. So thank you, and God bless you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Pastor, appreciate that, it's always good to see the hands and feet of Jesus at work in the county. We're all members of the same body, and thank you for doing your part, and I love the idea of participating in hope, and you guys are doing that through Families Moving Forward, that's a big deal, one of the things I actually like about that, people working with people, that's awesome, so thank you very much. Are there any other, was there another Zoom, Deb? No? Any other interested citizens? I'm just going to look out in the hall, I thought there was maybe one more, but not seeing any. Thank you very much, all right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. These are items that have been vetted through staff and will pass in one motion, and I will read them through and go from there. Item 6.1, we're going to adopt resolution number 2020-160, authorizing the approval of the grant agreement and receipt of funds from the Department of Human Services for Adult Mental Health Initiative and Community Support Program. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2020-152, authorizing Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding CARES to be used to purchase additional mobile computer equipment and contract services. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2020-155, approving an amendment to the 2020 through 2029 Transportation Improvement Program to add County Project CPT 169-10, and authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with Sand Creek Township for participation in the Berkshire Avenue Extension Design. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2020-156, awarding the contract to Kraus Anderson Construction Company for the construction of a new courtroom on the third floor of the Law Enforcement Center in the amount of $2,161,563.58. 6.5, adopt resolution number 2020-158, authorizing the acceptance of grant funds from Homeland Security Emergency Management to fund the initial investment of two next-generation firewalls, authorizing up to $180,000 in additional implementation, hardware, and subscriptions costs to be covered by, you guessed it, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES funds. 6.6, adopt resolution number 2020-159, authorizing an amendment to the sub-recipient agreement with the Scott County Community Development Agency for administration of the Mortgage and Business Support Program to add $64,000 of Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding CARES, funding to develop a consolidated jobs website. 6.7, adopt resolution number 2020-157, approving the agreement with Credit River to provide law enforcement services within its political boundaries. 6.8, adopt, I'm sorry, approve payroll processing of personal actions, 6.8. All right, yeah, that is it, that's it. I wanted to keep reading there, but that is, I'm going to double check, I'm going to double check, yeah, that is the end of the story. Wow, I was just getting my next breath there. So those are the eight items on the consent agenda, are there any, looking to the screens if there's any thing you want polled or clarified, otherwise? I think I heard something there, but otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Beard, I'll move the consent agenda.
How did he do that without moving his lips on that screen? That's good. Commissioner Beard has made the motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, any discussion? Otherwise, we'll look to Deb.
Commissioner Weckman-Brackey.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, we've got the CDA rolling in here, I very nearly put that on consent for you, can you imagine that? Almost read right through it. So now we're going to move on to 7.1, we're going to look at adopting resolution number 2020-153, approving the pledge of general obligation of Scott County, Minnesota, of the payment of the governmental development refunding bonds, Scott County, Minnesota, Unlimited Tax General Obligation, Northridge Court Project, Series 2020B, to be issued by the Scott County Community Development Agency, approving the pledge of the special benefit tax to the payment of such bonds, and authorizing the execution and delivery of documents in connection therewith. Woo, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for having us here today. So I'm just going to give a quick outline of the two properties we're requesting refunding resolution approvals for, and then we have Paul Steiman from Baker Tilly to go through the PowerPoint presentation that we've shared, and we're here for any questions. So the two properties we're looking at for refunding is, are, include Northridge Court and Shakopee, and Phillips Square and New Prague. We've already ran the approvals by the cities, so now we're just here to ask for the county's approval, and I'll turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Adam. Morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. So these are items 7.1 and 7.2 on your agenda, in one PowerPoint presentation. The CDA is planning to refund the 2020A and 2020B bonds. Those were for projects that were in New Prague and Shakopee. The 2020A is a 2010 issue in New Prague, and the 2020B is a 2012 issue in Shakopee. And these are the, a description of the ask today, to approve the county's GO, General Obligation Security for up to $4.1 million to refund bonds for. for up to $4.1 million to refund bonds for the Phillips Square project in New Prague and two for up to $4.5 million to refund bonds for the Northridge project in Shakopee. And approving the pledge of the CDA's special benefits tax and to authorize execution and delivery of the documents in connection with the transaction. So as, as you are likely aware, there is a statutory limitation to the amount of general obligation secured governmental housing revenue bonds that can be secured by Scott County. That statutory limitation is .50% of your estimated market value, seen there. Your estimated market value for pay 20, for 20, pay 21 is $20,196,700. And .50% of that is about 100 million. And then these are the projects here that are currently outstanding against that limitation. Elko New Market, which was just refunded last year. Two projects in Jordan, Brentwood Court. The New Prague project, Phillips Square, which is proposing to be refunded now. Two projects in Savage, three projects in Shakopee, one of which is proposing to, proposed to be refunded now. So you have a $46 million, $46,950,000 remaining against your limitation of 100-plus million. And this is why we're here today, because, because interest rates are significantly low at this point. This is a look all the way back to 1993, historically where interest rates have been, out to 2030. And you can see the top of the gray bar shows you historically what the maximum yields are. That this is again historical back to 1993. And the average yields in the black box right in the middle. And we are, the green boxes at the very bottom today. So we're, we're, today and really over the past 10 years been pulling that historical average yield down significantly. You'll see all the way through years six that the green box at the, at the bottom, the green boxes at the bottom completely cover the gray bar. So we're, we're definitely setting new historical lows at the present time. And that, and that's really what leads us here to this refunding, these refundings. So this is the Phillips Square refunding in New Prague. This is your item 7.2, I believe, the Resolution 7.2, to consider approval and sale of refunding bonds and redemption of the 2010 Phillips Square bonds. These bonds are currently enhanced by Scott County General Obligation. They also have an underlying New Prague General Obligation for up to 3 million of principal should the county's GO ever be drawn upon. No public hearings are required to refund these bonds. The county would need to affirm their continued support of the General Obligation Security in order for this to move forward. And the city and, city slash HRA has already affirmed their support on this, on the 21st of September. This is the result of our most recent analysis of the refunding of the 2010 issue. The refunded bonds will be $3,830,000 with a net future value savings of about $555,000. In today's dollars, that's about $495,000. And a net present value percentage of a little over 11%. And typically, if that percentage is greater than three, the refunding is typically a good refunding. So this refunding will have an estimated average annual savings of about $34,500 at our last analysis. And then the chart shows a slight decrease in debt service through the term, through the maturity, which is February of 2036. This is the Northridge Court refunding in Shakopee. And these, again, these are refunding of the 2012B bonds. They're also enhanced by Scott County General Obligation. And they also have an underlying Shakopee General Obligation Security should the county GO be drawn upon. No public hearing is required again for this refunding. And in order for it to move forward, the county would need to affirm their continued GO support. The city's taken action on this item on September 15, 2020. These are the results of our most recent analysis of this refunding of the 2012B. The refunded bonds will be $4,260,000. Their total net future value savings of about $473,000. And in today's dollars, it's about $432,000 with a net present value percentage of almost 9%, 8.8%. And these bonds are estimated to have an average annual savings after refunding of about $34,345. These are the key events in our calendar. September 8, the CDA approved a resolution authorizing the sale of the bonds. September 15, Shakopee approved their General Obligation Support and Participation. September 21, New Prague did the same. October 6, today is your consideration of assigning General Obligation Support. On Monday, October 12, the bonds will be raided. On the 13th, the CDA will consider a resolution to price the bonds. And then they'll be sold the following week and awarded by the CDA Pricing Committee, the 21st of October. Settlement on the 12th of November and redeeming both series of bonds the 1st of February 2021. With all that information, I'm happy along with my CDA team to take questions.
Are there any questions here or on Zoom?
Makes sense.
Yeah, I didn't know. I think I saw Steve out there someplace. I didn't know if he had any. There he is, there he is.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll start. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2020-153, approving the pledge of the General Obligation of Scott County, Minnesota to the payment of the Government Mental Development Refunding Bonds, Series 2020B to be issued by the Scott County Community Development Agency, approving the pledge of the special benefit tax to the payment of such bonds and authorizing the execution and delivery of documents in connection therewith.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Yep, please.
Commissioner Wexman-Brecky.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And on the table, 7.2, adopt Resolution Number 2020-154, approving the pledge of general obligation of Scott County, Minnesota to the payment of the Governmental Development Refunding Bonds, Scott County, Minnesota Unlimited Tax General Obligation Phillips Square Project, Series 2020A to be issued by the Scott County Community Development Agency, approving the pledge of the special benefit tax to the payment of such bonds and authorizing the execution, delivery of documents in connection therewith.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion here or online? Hearing seeing none? Looking out to the gallery, seeing none? All right, Deb.
Commissioner Wexman-Brecky.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, love to save money. Always a good day. Thank you very much. All right, that moves us to item number 7.3, where we are going to receive information on the distribution of Scott County Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act funding or CARES funding. And we're gonna pull up a PowerPoint. Let the room kinda change people, keeping our social distancing in place. I don't think the cameras can ever see this, but we always keep this very sparse, masks in and out. Lisa, good morning. Is it still morning? It is morning. Look, it's very, it's still morning.
Couple Leises. Good morning. You get to see more of my face the last couple of months than probably you're typically used to. Steve and Chris had a look, Steve was behind me.
Well, it's all these masks too.
And I are here today to give you an update on the CARES funding and how it's moving through the system right now. I wanna just preface it by saying that we have been spending a lot of time, especially during August and September, soliciting various groups for their needs, getting contracts in place with the help of GD and our contract staff and, and doing scoring of the applications to determine whether or not they meet the criteria. And today, although we haven't distributed a lot of money yet, I think we have things in place moving forward that you're gonna see money getting out to the people that are in need. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve and he's gonna talk about the snapshots that we're gonna be using to keep track of the expenditures as they're flowing through the system.
Thank you Lisa.
Good morning Chair, good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here to go through the overall plan and the spending measures that we've overtaken at this time for the 17.7 million that we received on July 29. And with that, we created some dashboards to kinda give us a point in time of how do we plan to use the funds? And at this point in time, how much has been spent? So on a monthly basis, we will be providing updates on how we're spending the funds and then what impact we've provided to the community. So with this dashboard, it's created in a way that it starts at a summary level so we can look at how the funds are planned to be used for external purposes versus internal purposes. And then from there, what categories do the funds go into? So I'll just start at the summary level here. Of the 17.7 million, we're targeting 10.7 million on, on external purposes, which is 60% and 7 million or 40% on our own internal purposes. Now within, within the external purposes, we have other, other dashboards created. So within, within these categories, small business support activities amount to 5.5 million or 31% of the overall funding. Housing security is 3 million or 17% of all the funding. Schools, food supports, nonprofits is 1.2 million or 7%. Rural broadband, 1 million, 6%. And then again, our own county reimbursement is 7 million or 40%. Now to the right shows how much we've spent at this point in time. At this point in time, we've done a lot of planning, but we really haven't spent much of the funds at this time. So just going across towards small business support, we spent 24%, which represents 1.3 million. Housing security, it's in the process of, but we haven't spent anything. Schools, food supports, nonprofits, we've spent 66% of the funding, which amounts to $790,000. The rural broadband of the 1 million, we've spent 31%, which is $311,000. And then on the county reimbursement of the, of the 7 million, we've only spent, I've gotta look here, 26% or 1.3 million. Now we will move forward on the detail of these individual categories and give updates. And the first one we'll go over is the small business support. And Lisa, we'll go through that information.
Well, this is probably the one area on the external side that we've had the most activity to date. As you'll recall, we started with the help of the CDA and their contractor. Next stage, we started reaching out to the business community for grant applications in late August with that application closing in mid-September. And at that point, we received, let's see, there were quite a few grant applications. Let me find the numbers here.
And that one does, it is closed and they think they have all the money sort of.
Yeah, right now, the applications are closed. They're reviewing the applications right now. We've processed quite a few of them. And some have been, of course, denied, but a number of them are being approved. And they're in the process of working up grant agreements with each of the individual business owners, daycare providers. And then the next step will be, we'll see how much money remains. Because as they go through the applications, they are finding typically in the areas where they're denying the applications that the businesses have received quite a bit of money through other CARES programs and they don't have enough expenses typically to justify additional, additional grant due to that nature. And that was one of the criteria that you all set up as a part of that process. So to date.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Lisa, do you have any statistics about percentages of denials, where, where that's at?
I think we're looking at 11% denial right now, but that will change over time because they're still in the process of reviewing the various grant applications.
50 of the 438 at this point, 11.4% have either been ineligible or have withdrawn.
Okay.
And they just started to review the ag ones, correct?
The ag ones are started reviewing, so we don't have any data on that yet as to their status. But they're hoping to have those reviewed and start cutting grant agreements and checks to them by the end of this week. So things are moving along pretty rapidly with the applications. And as you can see here, I'll probably move to the next slide because that's where all my information was. We have done a little bit of leveling within the categories. We received less than our targets, both in small business and sole proprietor and in-home daycare. But we received about twice as much in the farm agribusiness area. And after discussions internally and consulting with, with the county administrator, we decided to adjust the totals that they could allocate out to. So we're, we're doing a little bit less right now in the small business and in-home daycare providers and more in the farm side. And we'll see how those applications sort out and whether or not we actually fund all of those applications. But as it stands right now, we have enough money to provide for all of them.
You have a question.
You're gonna ask Lisa a question here?
Yep.
Lisa, on that previous slide, if you can go back one. The, like in the small business category there, you've got 30% of the money is in a blue column. Is that money that's actually in checking accounts of small businesses? Or is that money that's been spent developing the program to decide who gets the money?
Those are actually, that's money on the street, Commissioner.
That is money on the street.
That is money on the street.
Good, okay, thank you.
Because in that, in that category, and maybe all, all the categories, I forget, but it's, it's, the administration is a fee, a percentage of those dollars.
Yeah, and it's about 4%, 4%. There are a couple of costs that we didn't understand going into it. For example, they all need W9s and that required the CDA to, there's a fee associated with each W9 from their system that they have. So there's a few costs that are, are a little higher. But overall, the contractor is keeping their review costs at or below the level that they had talked about. So as of last Friday, we had 375,400 grants. That's not right. We kept changing these around, and this ended up being not right. We had on the employer side, the small businesses, we had just under a million out the door in grants on those. For daycares, we had two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred dollars out the door. So those numbers are not quite right in the presentation here, so I apologize for that. As I mentioned, the farm and agribusiness grants are under review right now, and the grants will begin to close this week. The fourth area that we had under business support was in the workforce development area. If you'll recall, we allocated fifty thousand dollars for workforce development, and working with our staff in Health and Human Services, they developed a program. The bulk of that money will be used to provide free training seminars to Scott County residents, and you may have seen the advertisements go out through scale and other venues late last week. That's what part of that money is being used for. Another part of that money is being used to put together computer tech packages for folks that are seeking employment, and we're working out a system with the libraries so that they're taking some of the old computers that we're bringing off of our system, putting them together with a hotspot and some other resources, and then they'll be able to be checked out at the libraries for, it's like a book, but maybe a little bit longer than a book, because we know that job hunting takes usually a month or two. And so we're working through those details right now, but those should be on the streets here probably mid-month. And so that's one of the areas that they're doing with the workforce development. So those programs are all up and running, and we'll, you know, be seeing them, you know, people being able to access those things. And of course, the cost for them will be, start to be incurred. So. With the rural broadband, Perry's been working hard. Right now, they're constructing the rural broadband system throughout the county, and it should all be in place by mid-November. There will be ninety percent coverage across the county when it's complete. There'll probably be some ongoing testing and tweaking of the system through the end of the month and early December. The great news is, is that all of our townships, except for two of them, are participating, Elkhorn Market and Jackson, I think is still considering, but we have great participation from our townships. And the total cost for that is, right now, at probably about one point five million dollars. So...
Yeah, sure. When you said ninety percent coverage, is that ninety percent of the population or the area?
Well, that's where I get a little shade in my understanding of it, but...
Because I was hoping we'd get closer to the high nineties of, like, residents and folk, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the actual percentage of population, I believe, is higher. It's ninety percent. It's in some of those southwestern river bottom areas, we still are going to have some issues, that it's very difficult to make the investment. But my understanding is the population is a little bit higher. It's ninety percent by area.
And what are we going from with this investment? You know, where were we before? Eighty-five?
Well, there were some pockets of the county that were under fifty.
Right.
So, you know, especially in those areas, well, I think you know where the coverage wasn't so good, but...
Yeah, we can certainly get from Perry what it was. I want to say it was the low eighties, or something like that, that we're covering, but we can get that specific number from Perry. He's got the maps with the circles that show the coverage.
Yeah, as we go and talk to townships especially, it might be good to be able to show that. And with that understanding that as we get closer, every percentage is harder and more costly, you know? That ninety-five to a hundred would cost a billion dollars, you know, so, yeah.
Correct. That's a big part of the issue with that. And I know they did make an adjustment, and they had a change order to run it down County Road sixty or Steppleman Drive there that helped add some additional coverage because of the population base in Blakely Township itself sits up in that area. So there have been some adjustments as we've been working through it to make sure that the benefit cost in benefiting more people in some of those alignments has been made. I just don't know what we're going from.
Yeah.
We can get that.
That'd be good to have.
But either way, the people from even like last night, it seemed like people are appreciative of that. We're moving this up and covering them out, because it's bad out in some areas, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is a deal where we're trying to, I mean, do the best we can with what we've got and the time we've given. And, I mean, both of you mentioned that it is, you get to a point with this where you are fighting tooth and nail for every half percent or percent increase. And that doesn't necessarily mean, we've all seen the Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile maps, wait a minute, I'm in their coverage, but I've got no signal. There's, you know, geographic changes.
It's not going to be perfect, yeah.
Yeah, it's so, so none of us is trying to say, well, oh my goodness, you know, everyone in this bubble should be, but golly, a high percentage of them in that coverage map is going to, better coverage.
And we've also heard from like Helena Township, Deanne is so awesome out there. You know, she sends an email last week that says, we're actually returning this many dollars, apply it to broadband first, to make sure that the broadband funding is there for everybody that needs it, and then a small portion for elections. So the earlier they notify us, the more it helps Steve and folks adjust some of these funds as they're looking at it too, to make sure that all the costs are covered and in the right buckets.
And this was something that I remember having a discussion with you and you, the camera's on, Commissioner Wickman-Brecke and Leslie, earlier this year. So this was something that was worked on when this thing first broke out, and this is just a continuation of that, that plans were in place so that we can jump on this quickly to make it happen by the timeline. So it's an awesome partnership and something that was on our radar before this. So awesome. It's a big deal.
Well, with that, here's a little bit more summary. We've allocated a million so far. The townships have contributed to the broadband. The township cost contribution is over a hundred and eighty thousand. And as Leslie mentioned, we've had some additional costs, and as we're continuing to do the construction, there'll be some changes taking place to ensure that we have good coverage.
And Mr. Chair, Lisa, those additional costs, I think you're estimating that we're going to be at about one and a half million. We allocated a million. Townships are going to come in with about two hundred thousand. Those additional costs will still be picked up by, we have room in the CARES dollar bucket. This isn't some other bucket we have to go to, right?
Right. Some of the other things that we had intended to do in the broadband and internet area was determined they're really not needed. And I think we're running pretty well overall on the external funding, that we have money to move around to the various areas of need.
Great. Thank you.
Can I interrupt? In regards to the townships, they're actually contributing over a half million dollars to us.
Oh, okay.
And the hundred and eighty-four thousand overage is, we're going to have an excess of a hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you. I read that wrong. Thank you.
Correct. It's actually to the positive, because when the discussion was that we couldn't do the stadium type things, that four hundred and some thousand dollars, those dollars then could go into this. So we're actually in pretty good shape, and that's why when that decision was made on the change order, there were ample funds in what you had overall allocated to be able to do it.
And do we have input from the townships then, if they're continuing, you know, because we're going to have a timeline here of spending this money, where they'd like that money to go if we can't use it? I assume most of us want to keep the dollars here in Scott County, not send it to the state or the feds, or do we know what to do with it if it can't be used there?
Well, obviously, elections is one of them. It's eating up more money when you have seven and eight staff sitting and covering Saturdays. So
Perfect.
they have election money that is potentially coming back. The other thing is, is that we can allocate it to the technology fund, and we can look at reallocating some of the county dollars even to the public safety and the public health salary type things that we're allowed to do.
Perfect.
So yes, they are looking at all of those options and trying to meet the wishes of the townships where they want it dedicated as well.
How about any cities? I know some cities have had their own programs, some have contributed money, you know, and some of this work we are doing is in cities. Some of this broadband work, have the cities contributed, or anything from that?
I think one of the cities did step up, didn't they, was...
At this point in time, I believe it's just been townships.
Okay. Thank you.
So, a comment to my right, I don't know if people heard that, but the idea of we may be getting more money in some of these different buckets, elections being one of them, there's likely going to be some new stimulus of some sort. I don't know if that's how far and wide. And I know we have a very capable staff, but just to make sure that whatever excess money we get, that we're putting it on the lowest odds of getting it from someplace else or from some other, which I know is hard to put it all in red, I guess, but in case we get some other elections money delivery from the state or feds, that we're not, trying to kind of spread the...
Spread it out. I think Leslie was saying we're experiencing way higher election costs than we anticipated.
Yeah.
So the actual CARES money that we got for elections does not
Oh, I know.
cover the cost.
Right.
But as the townships have had enough to cover their costs, and so, for example, Helena turned back in eight hundred dollars or something, we would apply that towards our elections cost, as Deanne put in their email. The few thousand dollars, and I can't remember the exact amount, it was probably ten or something, that would go towards that broadband project, because that was their request.
But we have to, I keep forgetting the date. The date is, we have to have these digital dollars?
Twelve one.
Twelve one, yeah, okay. So up until then, we could take from one column, put, there's nothing that...
And you've given us the ability to do that, and we're shifting it within what the direction is you've provided. You saw it with the businesses, right?
Yep, exactly.
We made the adjustments as the businesses came in. At some point, you're going to have to make a decision.
Right.
If there's some left in the business bucket, do you want to go back out for another one to the small businesses, or do you want to look at doing something else with those dollars? But we haven't gotten through that process yet, to bring it back to you.
And with the overriding those fifty pages of rules that thankfully we keep getting in our packets, that we're sticking within those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's like, we do have those
Right.
very, very stringent parameters. And I think it's okay to continue to say that, that we're working hard to make sure that we're well within those parameters.
Yes.
So an audit in two years does not hurt Scott County taxpayers, so.
Right.
So Perry did just send an email. Our goal will be above ninety percent after the CARES broadband deployment. They're working hard to reach the remaining locations, but there are some underserved that we are just not going to be able to reach with this project. And so the actual coverage will exceed ninety percent.
Yeah, if we can just find out, and I know Perry's listening, where we were at before that, you know, was it eighty-seven, was it eighty-five? We'd just like to know.
So the map shows, if you take a look at part of Belle Plaine Township and St. Lawrence Township, they were at sixty to seventy percent. So this will increase them. And if you take a look at Blakely Township, they were in that same ballpark, hovering right around seventy percent. So we're going to bring these areas up into the nineties with this project.
Well, not necessarily. The whole county will be at ninety. There still could be some under. Just want to make sure that...
The worst will be...
Down in parts of Blakely, in that lower river area.
Yeah.
But when you look at the rest of the, up above the bluff areas, they're going to have coverage.
Yeah, you know all, I mean, that's right in your...
Right, no, we know, but yeah, it'd just be good to say
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
this moved us as a county from eighty-five to ninety, whatever it is.
We'll have input that together so that we have it for the next update.
Yeah, thank you.
Because they'll have all those coverage maps by then.
Yeah.
Awesome.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're going to shift gears a little bit, and we're going to talk about housing supports. And just really quickly, as a reminder, the CDA is running our mortgage assistance program, and CAP is running our rental assistance program.
Yes.
And we contracted, we have a very small contract with an organization called Housing Link, so that people could apply in one place for a number of different housing programs. So as you might suspect, that took a little bit of time to get all of that orchestrated. But as of September twenty-third, our housing programs were up and running. We have had a very slow rollout of applications. That is true, not just in Scott County, but in the metro. And we talked to Dakota County, their programs rolling out very slowly. The state housing program is rolling out very slowly. So we have some very, very preliminary numbers to give you today. I suspect this is going to look much different in two weeks. So on the mortgage assistance side, in September, they collected seven applications. Six of those are pending, one is denied. They got two more applications in October. And I talked with Julie Seert about, like, what does this mean? Like, we kind of thought the floodgates were going to open. She said she thinks there's a couple things at play. One is that lending organizations have been very generous in how they are dealing with people with COVID-related barriers to payment, and that there have been some pretty generous time allotments for people to make payments. She said that they also think that people may not be taking the moratorium on evictions very seriously yet, like, that just sort of ran out, and that their messaging to people has been, no, do it now, take care of this now. CDA has done a terrific job, I think. I actually wish we could have spoken before they were here today, but they have done a terrific job in marketing. They have blanketed Scott County. HHS has also blanketed through all of their listservs. The information is out in four different languages, and there are fifty households in Scott County that right now are on a foreclosure list, or a pre-foreclosure list. And CDA reached out to all fifty of those households specifically to say, are you aware of this program? So they've really done a terrific job on that. There are four hundred and thirteen partially completed applications in the pipeline. So we think it's coming, it's just not here yet. On the rental side, so this is the program that CAP is doing. They got a little bit later start, just for a bunch of reasons, and a few applications got redirected to the wrong place, but they're going to make their first two payments later this week. So they have received two applications, two checks are going out this week.
And, go ahead.
And Chris, has CAP reached out to, I know in many of our cities, we have to, landlords have to either register or be licensed or have something. Have we reached out also to the landlords who can be giving out this information?
Yes, CAP has done some of that, and CDA also did quite a lot of that. So all the material is going both to household renters as well as landlords.
Okay.
From the, well, both mortgage and specifically the rental, like, is the administration cost reasonable?
Yes, we're basically paying for their expenses. So it's on a reimbursement basis with rental. They approve a payment, and we write them a check so they can issue the grant. We have also done, just in response to some of the feedback we got from you folks, we have done extensive work to make sure that we are screening for people who received the six hundred dollar a week in excess of unemployment payments, and so that we're really being careful, kind of as you were speaking to earlier, Mr. Chairman, about spreading our opportunity to help people out. So, as I said, I think that's going to look much different in two weeks. The next piece we want to talk about is the school food support nonprofits. As you can see it at the chart on the right, we issued grants to the school districts right away in early September. They had agreed to an October fifteenth and a November fifteenth reporting period to us. So that was actually one of Steve's ideas, to sort of monitor how is this money flowing through. It looks right now like most schools are using this to pay for childcare costs that were not, they didn't have another mechanism to pay for. Let's see, so all those grants are awarded. In terms of food supports, so we invited eleven organizations to submit grants or requests for grants, and of those, six applied. All of those, everybody who applied was awarded money. So there were, when we originally came to you, we said there was one food distribution center that was CAP. They were doing a big volume. They were feeding other smaller organizations. But in fact, when we looked at the applications, there were two, Heart Ministry is very similar to that setup, and so we gave them higher grants as well. There were four local food shelves, and they're listed on the slide, and they are using money for a host of things, really. Mostly some refrigeration, transportation, packaging, because how meals are going out now, they're prepared, prepackaged. That whole system has changed. That whole system has changed. There, so there's takeaway containers and storage equipment, there's technology updates. Several of these organizations are working towards no contact food exchanges, so they need a lot of technology to do that. And obviously, they have added PPE and cleaning product needs.
And did we receive any feedback from the five, because I, just thinking about those, those five who didn't apply, they're smaller, totally volunteer run?
Yep.
Did they just feel they didn't need it, didn't have the capacity to actually apply?
You know, we, we did three outreaches to all of the food organizations. One of the public health nurses actually helped us with that Haley, Ms. Wick. And what they said is that there has been really tremendous giving in the community, and they didn't have the need right now.
Okay.
Another question I, I get in life, we're part of a bigger tapestry.
Yeah.
But some of these groups are bigger and cross borders and whatever else. I just think of like CAP. Are they getting, some of these groups got to be getting money elsewhere too, which is fine.
Yep.
Which is fine.
Yep.
So, we have a comfort level that we're trying to do what we can for the folks within our borders, understanding that we're part of a bigger picture. I get that.
Yep.
Just assuming they're also getting money from Dakota or whatever, which is again, fine.
Yep. So, our, our screening criteria included that you had to have either a physical presence in Scott County or you had to be providing a substantial level of service to Scott County residents, and they had to be able to document that. And so, that was part of our score, our scoring criteria. They also had to claim, did you get other funding from who and how much? So, for example, CAP's a really good example of that. They applied for the food supports, they didn't apply for the nonprofit grant because they had received funding for those services somewhere else. So, let's talk about nonprofits. So, we invited 12 agencies to apply, six took advantage of that. We have spent only $3,600 so far, but most of that has been around just getting contracts out and backed and signed. This is again, like, going to look very different in two weeks. So, the list of organizations that we funded, everyone who applied was funded. And they also spent or anticipate spending money on a variety of things that are really going to matter to the community, honestly. They, one program started a check-in program for senior citizens, so a phone call check-in to make sure seniors are doing okay. The Y started an online physical education program for kids and families who are part of distance learning. They also set up an emergency food distribution program. Nonprofits were looking for software to help their, their staff work remotely. We paid for some medical supplies, baby supplies. There's an organization that is going into work with high-risk kids to support distance learning for kids who have additional struggles in that area. So, there's some mentors going into those homes to help with that. There's some mental health and transportation supports for youth involved in some programming through Treehouse. So, there's a pretty wide variety of things that the money is impacting at this point. The groups that didn't apply, we had six groups that didn't apply for this funding, and they were kind of the ones we thought would. And so, some just didn't respond. We again, reached out three times to all those organizations, but mostly what we heard is we either got money from somewhere else or we don't have excess needs at this point. So, a little bit of worry that the need is going to come later next year when the money is gone. But for right now, that's where the, where it sits. Steve, you want to talk about the internal spending?
I'll go over the last area now of reimbursement, and this is for the county reimbursement. This is the $7 million or 40% of the total, and we broke the internal reimbursement down into four different categories. The first category being direct expenses. This is the PPE and fiberglass, that type of stuff that was purchased between March and September as we were really in the heat of it. And at this point in time, basically, I've spent the full $200,000 allocation that we went towards for this area. Personnel diverted. We allocated 1.67 million towards this part of the county reimbursement. The main driver here is the stand-up of the Emergency Operations Center. And for the personnel associated with that, we've spent nearly 96% at this point in time. Granted, we've stood it down back in, I believe, May or June, but we still have different activities occurring where people are coding time towards COVID.
Now, that happened May or June back in 1996, right? It sure seems like it was that long ago.
It does feel that long, yes. This has been the longest year, yes, I would agree. The third area that we have is the technology and future PPE needs. We have a lot of planning that's going on, and we're really starting to execute a lot of the projects. But at this point in time, we've only spent 1% of that total. But that will be changing a lot over the next couple of weeks for sure. And then, the last area is the public health and public safety salaries. We've been going by different guidance that the Department of Treasury, the US Department of Treasury has provided. And we have in place now how we're going to move forward, but we're still in the process of getting those expenses identified. But we do plan within the next week to have that identified, and we'll have updated numbers here. On the next slide, I have more of the details within each one of these areas. So, the direct expenses, these were the expenses between March and September. The largest item on the list was actually equipment that was added to towers throughout the county, and that had board approval back in March. And that was a three-way agreement between townships, the county, and the provider itself for splitting those costs. The personnel diverted, like I said before, is mainly for the operation of that Emergency Operations Center. The technology and PPE category, what this is, is there were over 20 projects approved to help the internal resources or internal operations of the county to perform better during this pandemic. And I've listed some of the most costly items. The first one being laptops, monitors, and printers. This allows for current employees that still have desktop computers to be able to now be able to work remotely and not have to be in the office. We're also looking at a new firewall. The current firewall that we have only allows traffic of one gigabyte. We're hoping to increase it up to 10 gigabytes, which would then allow faster speeds for the employees to conduct their business.
This is the one you approved this morning. So, this is a firewall that was aging.
Right.
Needed to be replaced anyway, but with the remote working, it gives us a lot more capacity. And then, the IT department also went out and got a grant from the state justified with our hosting and remote working. It picked up a large, large piece of that project.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Yep.
Next item on the list is encrypted radios. One of the governor's executive orders was that any type of COVID-related information can only be communicated over encrypted radios, and our technology didn't, did not allow for that. So, we did go ahead and, or we're in the process of getting encrypted radios so that when there's a police officer or somebody going to a scene and potentially, and they know that there's COVID information available, they will be able to communicate that. So, the reporting person can have the right PPE equipped.
Ms., Mr. Chair, Steve, just because this has been an issue, I just want to offer an interpretation that the order didn't say that was the only way it could be communicated. There are other methods. I think that's what the press was getting at. But those methods, from what our sheriff provided, aren't the safest and the best or the most efficient. They could do a phone call, so it's not that that's the only way of communicating. So, I just want to, the order didn't say that. The order said we can't use regular radios or non-encrypted radios for it.
Okay, thank you.
Again, it's just been an item of controversy.
So, it does make sense to kind of talk about that, that like I, on the nights, I sleep pretty well, which is most nights. Like, I, I do that, well, for a couple of reasons, but one is like, I think we're making the best decisions we can with the information we have at the time. You know, and I, for one, have always said, hey, I'm for pushing to try to get some of these things because, you know, it says internal expenses, but that benefits the population external. I mean, it's not just something that, oh, and it was in the, I, I forget what, a couple of years down the road. I think those were moved up, I don't remember exactly, but they were in the CIP a couple of years down the road. They got moved up. Like, it makes sense, like, I feel comfortable that we made the right decision with the right motive. I will also say I've had a little bit of pushback on the idea of encryption in general, which I, I could argue that both ways. I, I've talked with very good friends who are not involved in government, they're law enforcement, obviously, very close friends, pro-liberty, conservative fellows, in this case, there are a couple of guys I talked to. Hey, we want to arrive safely to these calls. You know, we've gone to some calls, and people are there already waiting for us. That, that weighs, I get the liberty, I get someday this could be used against us, it won't be this crew. But when I've got, you know, in this case, some close friends in that arena, that, that, I take that with, there's a lot of weight to that. They've got no benefit to crushing liberty, they're not about crushing liberty, they're about expanding that. But I also want them to go home to their families safe. Someday, yes, this may be an issue, but I just.
And I think we've had recent evidence of the non-encrypted radios being used in the committing of crimes. I mean, that's, you know, that's, again, I'm all for liberty too, but when we're using non-encrypted radios to commit the crime or stay at the crime scene until the police get there, you know, that's a big deal too. So, it's a, it's a protection issue.
Yeah, again, we can all probably argue it both ways, but when we have military tactics being used against law enforcement, not necessarily here today, but in our state, I don't know if those always were the case, where military tactics are being used against law enforcement, and so.
As, as far as CARES go though, in the funding, this is the safest way for our officers to be informed versus trying to scroll through a screen and read something or have to take on a call. They can receive this, they get the information, they get it safely, and they know what personal protective equipment they need to have at that scene or if it's an issue. And it also then meets the HIPAA guidance, which is so important to other parts of society. And so, this is, our sheriff truly believes the safest way to get all of our officers that information.
I agree. Safest way, by the way, we should say it.
And that is, and that is why when your governance committee reviewed these, the biggest thing was, did it meet CARES? How did it meet CARES? And it got to safety for public safety. It got to requests of teleworking, so firewalls, the laptops, the scanners, those types of things, the equipment people needed. You see some things like Chromebooks for mental health, so the people who don't have those can tell, tell mental health with our staff to keep everybody safe. So, these went through, when it said they were scored and prioritized, there were many things on there, a wish list of things certain people wanted that were not prioritized because they didn't meet that threshold for CARES funding. But this one clearly did because it keeps our officers safe.
Good.
Sorry, that was more than a deep bargain for there.
No, I think it made sense, it made sense that we, you know, we're not afraid to address anything because we try to be completely open, candid, and transparent, and that again, helps me sleep at night, so.
And I'll make sure in the future to make sure to say that it's for the safety.
Yeah, I think that makes sense because it, people couldn't construe that we're somehow trying to masquerade it somehow, and that is not the case at all.
And then, there is one item on here that I didn't list, but from previous discussions, I think it's worth noting. For the part-time elections people, we are planning to spend about $343,000 to cover those polling booths, and that's where some of that money may be redistributed from the cities and townships. And then, the last item that we have here for internal reimbursement is the payroll related to public health and public safety. This has always been an issue from the start on how the Department of Treasury defined what truly is public health and public, public safety related towards COVID. So, we've had multiple guidelines. The most recent came from the Department of Treasury Office of the Inspector General, which tends to be a little more liberal in the basis of how you can claim it. But we still plan at this point in time to, to claim it conservatively because we believe we have enough expenses to cover our funds. And how we plan to code towards this is our sheriff provided, provided us a report listing what percentages of his staff, their duties are diverted towards COVID activities. So, we are going through our system now to make some changes, and that's where, within the next week, we'll have the amounts that we'll be able to present towards this document.
Well, and I'll just say, it does feel like, what was that game back in the day? It was a couple of squares, you hopscotch or something, is that something right? You jump to a square? It feels like to me, and that's why I want to give staff, you know, kudos, that, that we jump to the square. Okay, here's the rules and regs that we need to follow today for, for CARES or RONA in general. Oh, something changed, we got to jump to this square. Oh, now it changed, we got to jump to this square and live to these regulations, all while hula-hooping and, and, you know, juggling fire. But that's the reality of it, these things change sometimes that quickly. And so, I, it feels like to me that we've been able to be nimble and adapt and shift and change all while trying to, you know, follow the rules as best we can and, and pushing where we feel comfortable to the benefit of our taxpayers. Like, I, I have a high level of comfort with that, even as uncomfortable as, as these times are.
This one has been probably, as Steve said, I think, the most difficult. But part of it was, your direction was get most of it out to the public, help the public, right? So, this one has gone back and forth. First, it was you can just claim their salaries, then it was down to detailed time card recording, and now, the next one came out with, yep, we're going to want to see payroll expense, but you don't need to have the detail. Sheriff Henan and his staff did a really good job of looking for a couple of weeks how people were actually spending their time. So, we are comfortable that our payroll will be reflective on average, not every day, but on average over a several-week period, that that is how they are spending their time towards the COVID issues. So, I think we all now feel pretty comfortable that our payroll will be accurate and reflected. So, if they change again.
I know.
Right.
We have the right documentation.
Well, yeah, hopefully, we're coming to the end, but, yeah, so thanks for being flexible. Sheriff's office has been flexible, everyone jumping to the right spots at the right time and pushing it.
And that concludes our presentation. If, do you have any additional questions?
Any questions, any more questions here or Zoom, Zoom land, or whatever platform we're using today?
Thank you.
I'm just glad that, you know, we've kind of gone through all the squishiness, you know, being able to move to these different internal, external, different columns, and now, we're going to receive an update on, on, on the RONA, it's going to be just super concrete, nothing but answers. Because nothing's changed with this, so. I know, this has been shifting sand. Not Lisa, just this whole Ramona thing in, in general has just been shifting sand like crazy.
Good morning, Commissioner Beer, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, I'm going to do a brief update on coronavirus. As you can see, our numbers have increased. We're, as of yesterday, are at almost 3,000 cases, 28 to 05. We are seeing some pretty dramatic number increases over the last little while, including, actually, it's, it's really right across the board, all age groups, which is telling us that it's pretty widespread in our community. We did have an additional death this past week, bringing our numbers to 34. Overall, US cases are at about 7.5 million with over 200,000 deaths. This chart is just to show you kind of we're in it, we're in another upward trend. This is not surprising. We, we expected this to happen once kids got back in school. So, it's really just more of a, kind of a trend visual there.
So, is this school kids getting this or?
It's everybody. It's really. It's really, our last numbers, in the last couple of weeks, we're trying to look for trends, is there any specific outbreaks? We have multiple outbreaks related to events, workplaces, school, et cetera. It really is just widespread. I, I can't really say that it's being driven up by one thing in particular. Looking at some city-level data, your chart on your left is percentage of cases, and the chart on the right is just counts. This really isn't surprising, where we have higher populations, we have more cases. And one of the things we are watching carefully, this is based on the rate of our cases per ten thousand in the past fourteen days. The state provides these numbers that are about two weeks behind. The state provides these numbers to the schools, and this is what the schools are using to base their decisions on what model of learning they're gonna use. Is it hybrid? Is it in-person? Is it telecommuting only? So, every week, I calculate the numbers for the schools based on the cases that I currently have, but we know they trickle in a little bit slowly. So, right now, we know that at a minimum for this past week, for the past period of nine thirteen to nine twenty-six, we're gonna be at least at twenty-five point one-one. So, we have seen a dramatic increase since the eight, since the data that was reported two weeks ago, where we started to see a downward trend, and now we're back in an upward trend. Again, this isn't surprising to us, this is what we expected once kids got back into school. I, I found this chart the other day, and I thought this was quite interesting, which places have the most new daily cases? And this is as of October fourth. As you can see, Minnesota is sitting at orange. That means about ten to twenty-four new cases daily per one hundred thousand people, and indicates just that widespread escalating community spread. What is concerning to me on this chart is, all of the states beside us are red. They're in unchecked community spread, twenty-five daily cases per one hun- hundred thousand people. And if I was to speculate why that might be, my guess is because we have required masks. That could be one of the reasons. That would be my, my guess. But we do know people in Wisconsin are coming here, people from North Dakota are coming here, so I just thought you might find this interesting. Last time we spoke, you asked about some death data comparisons, and so what I've done here is take a look at the same period from 2019, comparing it to 2020. We have heard from our hospitals and clinic partners that there is a lot of concern that people aren't attending their preventative care appointments right now, and in the next scene, there's an article related to that, and that people, ER visits are down related to heart disease and hypertension. So, I figured that I, we probably would see an increase in heart disease and hypertension, and so that's why I took a look at this data, and sure enough, they are on the rise. Deaths due to heart disease, heart attacks, and hypertension are up. Suicide currently is up compared to the same time period last year. Drug overdose, our numbers have doubled, and the rate has doubled. Motor vehicle is about the same, and other falls and accidents are about the same. One interesting note, I took a look at number of deaths in the long-term care facilities for the same period, and last year, of the deaths, thirty-point four percent were in long-term care facilities, whereas only twenty-nine percent this year are in long-term care facilities. So, that was an interesting data point to look at.
And Lisa, is this the primary reason on the death certificates, not the underlying reason?
Correct.
Primary?
Correct. Looking at flu versus COVID impact, I just wanted to pull some numbers for you. CDC estimates the 2019 to 2020 flu season approximately had thirty-nine million to fifty-six million flu illnesses, which resulted in approximately four hundred and ten thousand to seven hundred and forty thousand flu hospitalizations. And these are estimates, final date, data is not quite in yet. And that resulted in a minimum of twenty-four thousand deaths, and, which could also be as many as sixty-two thousand. Twenty, you know, around, in a rough year, we expect about thirty-five, thirty thousand, that's average. Comparing that to our, our COVID numbers, if you don't take a look at that, we've had a minimum of seven million, four hundred and thirty-six, two hundred and seven confirmed cases of COVID illness. Estimates from the CDC are not yet final, but they expect it to really be six to ten percent, or six to ten times higher than that in reality, although they might not be confirmed because we know people are getting mild symptoms, they might not go get tested, testing wasn't available at first, or they're asymptomatic, so they don't get tested. So, that's at a minimum. We know approximately four hundred and thirteen thousand people have been hospitalized in the US. And the really interesting piece here, even though the hospitalization is pretty similar for flu last year compared to COVID, the difference in the death has been, is dramatic. Whereas, we've had about twenty-four thousand, somewhere between twenty-four and sixty-two thousand deaths from flu in those six months prior, we have had approximately two hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred and thirty thousand deaths from COVID. This is concerning to us, obviously, due to its lethality and the mortality rate, but also, we're coming into flu season now, and our hospitals right now are still dealing with COVID. So, when we take a look at the four hundred and thirteen thousand plus a four hundred and ten thousand, that's a double impact to our hospitals. Again, we talked last time, we have ramped up. The metro is sitting at around a five percent availability bed for certain beds. But we have ramped up, and we could increase that, but we also know that in previous bad flu seasons, our hospitals have actually been impacted quite a bit. And we also know that healthcare workers have been quite impacted by COVID. So, we may be able to ramp up, but the question is, can we support those resources? Talk a little bit about our COVID response to date. Community testing has been very successful. You can see a picture here from our clinic in the Y parking lot about a month ago, where we still had good weather. We have several of those tents that we are using, and they're drive-through operations, and we could set up as many as four lanes at once and do about a hundred per hour. We've completed twenty clinics to date, that's almost a twenty-four hundred tests completed, and we're seeing around a five percent positivity rate. Some clinics have been as many as fifteen percent, and those have been in areas of lower income. And statewide positivity rate is about a three to four percent. So, I think I mentioned this last time also, I just think we're targeting the right people. These are not large, come one, come all clinics. It's very targeted, looking for people who may have access issues, or there's, where there's wide, where we believe there's widespread community transmission.
Always open to all, but trying to, trying to.
Correct.
Push access.
Correct. I know yesterday's clinic was in the Gedney's parking lot, and it was quite busy. Out in Chaska, we had three hundred people in three hours with only two lanes. So, we are able to ramp up and ramp down.
You, you may be getting to this, but, and maybe not, but are we changing our testing method? Or we're still doing the partial brain cleaner?
Correct. It only goes up the nose.
Got it.
Doesn't hurt at all. It's not quite comfortable, but it's not painful.
Yeah, 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 just make sure.
Only goes partway.
Okay.
And we are maximizing our partnerships, we're using community paramedics and community EMTs with Dr. Wilcox's group, public health nurses and community health workers, as well as we use volunteers wherever we can. Our volunteers have been wonderful in helping with registration, with traffic flow, and, and other response. We started with Scott County, and we are winding down with some of those tests, test sites. We, there are a couple of sites that we are gonna go back to because of the high rates that we found. But right now, we are, this week, we're in Carver, and we completed a Lee Sauer one last week, and we may be doing someone's in Rice. So, this is a regional approach. There was some, that was one of the reasons why the state was very interested in working with us, is we're looking at more of a regional concept and assisting our neighbor, neighbor counties with this process.
So, we're, I'll use the word marketing, these drive-ups through partners primarily?
We are marketing in it through partners, we're marketing it in newspapers. One of our most successful clinics was in New Prague because they put a very big article about it. We are marketing it wherever we can.
But are you, like, targeting, I don't wanna use that word, but I'm just targeting groups versus cities, so that maybe something, where I'm going is, is, I'm trying to figure out, is there, I get all this data's new, but if you're seeing high positivity rates in certain drive-ups, is there, are we able to, like, get our hands around, like, the Y, like, some of those higher ones, if they're outside the average?
Yep. In some cases, it's not really a widespread marketing. For example, when we did an RV park, we went door-to-door and dropped flyers there, as well as put up a sign versus a larger clinic where we would put it in grocery stores. But for some communities, we're putting in a flyer or information in, for example, if we're targeting the Latinx community, we're putting that in a grocery store that specifically serves that community, or working with the Muslim Community Center, Islamic Community Center, to target the Muslim community, as well as marketing it. The New Prague one was, let's see what happens, and a lot of people came. That one had actually a little bit of a lower positivity rate, so. But one of the populations that we were looking for in that, in the more southern area, were seniors. So, it's not just the diversity that we're targeting, it's also really populations at risk.
Sure, yep.
So, in some cases, that clinic probably had, and I'll have to go check the numbers, had a higher percentage of seniors than we normally see. The other thing we're doing is case investigation. This, as of nine twenty-one, these go by week, so we've completed quite a few case investigations to date. Each of these case investigations takes, for one person, takes an hour to an hour and a half, sometimes to complete. If they're in a different language, it takes a little bit longer. We have some temporary staff that we've hired to complete this. We have wonderful volunteers that have been with us since March, completing these for us, and are amazing, and have put in many, many hours. And the state is moving to more of a regional model start, model starting soon, and I will bring in an RBA for a contract to you in a little bit, but we are gonna be getting an additional two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to complete this work. And we are able to back-bill that to the beginning of, or to the middle of August. So, this is one of our tools in our toolbox, and we know that it is fairly effective. The other thing that we do in response is, we are delivering essential products to those that, when we complete the case investigation, we identify what supplies they might need. Part of, for example, part of the quarantine is, you need to be able to take your temperature twice a day or once a day to be able to identify when your fever is over, to know when you are able to go out again. And thermometers are very hard to get, we've delivered sixty-six in the community. We've also are working with the schools to provide them with five hundred thermometers to give out to students if they don't have a thermometer at home, so they know when they can safely return to schools. And these are items that are very difficult to get right now, hand sanitizer, disinfectant supplies.
Are you finding those, I'm assuming those are the infrared or whatever they use, the contactless thermometers? Are they pretty accurate, are you finding?
Those aren't the ones we're giving out.
Okay, okay.
We are giving out the digital ones, the infrared ones are very expensive.
Okay, yeah.
But those seem to be fairly, the digital ones are fairly accurate.
No more mercury ones, I take it, in the good old days?
No, apparently, apparently, those are bad. The other thing, part of case investigation, the other side, so the first type of one that I was talking about was that individual one, when a positive individual comes to our attention, we call them within twenty-four hours. The other piece that we are doing, we have a dedicated staff person that calls each and every employer that has a case to let them know that they have a case. If the individual has given us permission to share the name, we are able to share that, otherwise, we don't. And then we talk to them about cleaning and, and masking, and ways that they can make their employee, employees safer. It's been fairly, you know, well-received, and there's been a lot of information sharing on that level. Some of them just want resources and, and fly, information to give to their staff. We actually have worked with a couple employers to have a testing site over at their, at their place of employment. We also have been working very closely with the superintendents related to cases and quarantine, and working through the guidance that MDH has been providing, and we have a weekly call with them and talking about our numbers that we have. And we also have a dedicated person who is working with the school nurses. We have, you know, first day of school, we had cases, calls that we had cases, what do we do? And just walking them through, there is a very complex path that the Minnesota Department of Education has put together, what to do when you have a case, and when do you know if they have to go out for ten days, fourteen days, et cetera? Working with them with exposures, and again, that isolation and quarantine. We have a couple of schools, one of the schools on our call last week said they had ninety-three students out on quarantine. Another school nurse said this is working, that they seem, that it's, it seems to get in, get them early, and, and there's no more spread. It's very interesting, I was mentioning today, as a mom of four kids, one of the very frustrating things for me was, if my kid had a fever the day before, I couldn't send him to school the next day. And a lot of parents, some parents don't follow that, but I did. And it always used to bug me, where I saw my kid just hanging out watching TV. One of the lessons that I think we're gonna learn from COVID, now that we have these processes in place, is when that happens, I think parents may be more apt to follow that rule because now they can go online and still participate in school. And is that gonna have, is that gonna have a trickle effect with flu season and colds and strep throat? So, it's very interesting what we're learning from this as far as infection control.
I just would like to call out Lisa and staff of your work with employers. I've only heard good things about it after some of those initial thoughts where some employers were like, oh, what's the county want, you know, why, why is she contacting me? Since then, it just found it to be very good because, as I told people who called me, is, you know, we, we want you to be able to do business and, and do business in our county and keep everybody safe, and that's exactly the message they've been getting from your department and are thankful for the help. So, thanks, especially for helping those smallest businesses who just are overwhelmed with, with making sure they're, you know, able to operate within guidelines and, and smartly, so thank you for that.
Thank you for acknowledging that. I did wanna emphasize, we're not calling for enforcement. We are calling to ensure that they can have this continuity of operations because if all of their employers, employees are sick, they, they're not gonna be able to operate. So, we're really there to help employers to ensure that, that they're doing the right stuff to keep their employees safe, to keep them healthy and at, and at work.
Well, that's good feedback to hear because, you know, oftentimes, the first knock at the door, hey, I'm with the government, I'm here to help you. That's, so it's good to hear that feedback, that businesses are appreciative of that, which is what we're after.
Thank you. On the other side of that, my slide is not turning, there we go. We've been doing a lot of event planning in the county. We have worked with at least thirty to forty events to date, probably more. Law enforcement actually started working with some of the events that were happening. This involves working through the state guidance with them, sending them the guidance, working through it, helping to identify how many people they can have, how many people they can't have, how to separate. You can have two fifty, but if you want five hundred, you, here's what you have to do and separate. We've been working with large events and even just the smaller events. We are destin, we're Destination County. We aren't saying to people, you can't have fun, you can't have an event. We're saying, let's continue this, but ensure that we have a safe event, that we don't have an outbreak. We, many have sent me their plan, I've reviewed it for them, I've provided, I'm not approving it, again, not enforcement, not approving it, but providing them with some tips on how they can be safer, and how they can make their events safer. We've had lots of weddings, the last thing people want is something, you know, their grandparents to get sick from COVID, from the wedding, that will certainly mar their memories. Or for the Attorney General's office. Or for the Attorney General's Office to call, and we have had some of those experiences where the Attorney General has called related to an event. And so when that first happened, that's when we decided we need to have these plans in place. There's a lot of very technical questions that MDH asks in these reviews and Attorney General. But they like to hear that the person has been working with public health and that we have a plan in place. And since that has happened, we've had very little involvement with the Attorney General's Office. I don't know if we want to know anything about that, but so far I just checked in with Severs. They seemed that things are going well and that they haven't had any incidents and people are being very compliant. So that was one of kind of our, one of our concerns because it is a fairly large event. But they have done a really good job of putting two fifty people on one side, two fifty on the other, they don't cross, and it seems to be going well.
So, and we're monitoring that?
Not monitoring, no. The state might be.
Okay.
We just provide input, education, help, we don't monitor.
So are you, are you, would you say there's a high degree of businesses or groups embracing the help and seeing your group as an ally at this stage of the game, or are we still kind of banging our head a little bit?
I have not had one person hang up on me or refuse any assistance. So that's been good. I think it's been fairly well received, I think they appreciate the support. You know, we did get a call from Sever, from the state related to Severs and we worked with MDH and the individual from Severs and they felt, yep, you guys have a really strong plan.
Because they had been working with you in advance, so it wasn't, but state probably didn't know that at the time.
Correct. So I think what they're, you know, I would, I would hate to say that they love when we call.
Yeah, no, I, but in these crazy days.
I would like to believe that they do. But it really is, you know, the message that we're sending out is go ahead and have these things, go ahead and continue what you're doing, but let's do it in a safer way with coronavirus in mind and, because we don't want people to get sick. Severs was very, you know, they really feel connected with the community, we don't want to make people sick. You know, the craft shows that are happening, a lot of the individuals that go there are seniors and they're, you know, they don't want people to come to their craft show and pick up COVID because they'll never come back. So I think people have been fairly open and to the assistance and they're following through. I'm not seeing a ton of cases from the ones that, you know, from weddings that have participated or other large events. I'm not seeing any cases, so I know they're following through.
Mr. Chair, I've actually had a couple, I want to say three, three businesses reach out to me and say that it went well and they were really thankful.
I mean.
So, small, very small businesses.
But like you said, I think you said, you know, that sometimes those are the ones that really need the extra handholding. But I mean, the whole goal is that, that, you know, we're not here to try to punish and crush people. We're here to try to come alongside and be an ally, you know, we are here for them to help open in a smart way to allow people to go or not to go. Not saying open at all costs, that's not what we're doing, trying to say, hey, here's a smart way to sustain your business, your employees, your livelihood in a way that makes sense and is reasonable. Boy, that's, that's all anyone can ask for, and we're there to help. Not carrying the heavy hammer, trying to just help mold and, and some plans that make sense. So that's really awesome to hear that, I get it, it's not a hundred percent, but some people that are responding are having a favorable response to that and seeing us as an ally, that's awesome.
We're trying.
Yeah, that's all we can do.
So what's next? You know, people talk about the new normal, this is really just our next normal because I think there's going to be something different next year. But we're going to continue doing the same thing, doing our testing, our case investigations and our essential services. We're also planning for flu season, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. My message is get your flu shot. This really, you know, the, for, as far as prevention, this is the best shot we got. Pardon there, sorry. Best shot we got for prevention, thank you.
Should have given, should have been a little quicker on that, but.
But that will help. It's very important as far as, you know, I've got a little graphic in there. But the flu shot we know does prevent some flu. It prevents also getting COVID and the flu at the same time because when you are sick with the flu, you're reducing your immunity and you could also get COVID, which will certainly be more impactful than it usually is. And it also will hopefully help relieve the burden on the healthcare system. So we strongly urge that, that you get that done. Also, we are now starting for mass vaccination campaigns. I don't know when we're going to have vaccine available to all. We do have been told that maybe in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one, we might start seeing vaccine, but we know it's going to go to healthcare workers and it's going to go to the vulnerable populations first. In my head, I'm anticipating maybe June, July, August, we might have, start seeing some vaccines. So we're writing our plans now, getting things going. One of the things for our COVID testing is we will have a database of those that came for tests. We have their cell phone numbers and we have their emails. And we're able to contact them when we have ma, vaccination clinics open to the public. So we'll be able to directly reach those vulnerable populations that we did not really have information on before.
Do, and I'm probably getting ahead, but do we have, by we, you, do you have any better idea, is there any more science that, hey, if you in fact tested positive and you've come out of the woods, you have a likelihood of being immune? I mean, is that a?
Yes and no, here's where my squishy answer comes.
Yeah, I mean, I get.
You knew that it was going to have at least one squishy answer.
Been squishy, this thing, not you, this Rhone has been squishy.
Yep. It's similar to the flu. We know that you have to get a shot each year. And they, you know, with the flu, the, the immunity lasts X number of months. So we know that that's going to be likely with COVID, they don't know how long that is. I did read an article a month ago or so that they had one person who got Corona a second time in China, a month after, but was it really a second time or was it, you know, he was still kind of sick and he just didn't take care of himself and he got it again?
Or testing, could testing, I mean, was it, I mean, there's, seems like there's just so many unanswered questions, which again makes it.
Because you could test positive, get sick, and then a month later you still may test positive. And it doesn't mean you have it again, it means that you're still sick, it's still in your system. So we don't know how long, once you have it, when you are going to be immune. We know, you know, when, when we start doing more antibody tests, you know, that will help because we'll have a better idea there. But we also know with the mass vaccination campaign, you're likely going to need two shots because it's the first time you're exposed. So you'll have one and then thirty days later you'll need another that will give you more immunity. The, what I also heard was that we need about seventy percent of the population to have immunity, to get that herd immunity. Right now, I think we're sitting at about ten percent. So we have a long way to go and we will learn more as we go along. The other thing that we're doing is an impact survey that will be starting soon. This is in partnership with several other counties in the metro as well as University of Minnesota. Ours will be online, we're not mailing anything out, it's voluntary. This is not the same thing as the people that were out in the community doing surveys, going door to door. That was also voluntary and they were offering twenty dollars, I think, for participation in the, in the survey as well as optional COVID testing, that was discontinued. That was from Casper and that was discontinued, so that is no longer happening in our community.
I wanted to go back to the flu vaccine. That's always kind of a best estimate of what flu virus is going to be cruising around the country.
Correct.
At what point in the season do we have an idea of the effectiveness of the flu vaccine?
That's done through surveillance. So how the flu season, how the flu vaccine is developed is we go by what's happening six months earlier on the other side of the world and we say this is likely going to come here because it does. And it's made from what we know there, plus there's also H one N one in there and some of the standard ones. And then they watch and they see how many people, I mean, it's done by surveillance, they do both sentinel surveillance and other surveillance to see. Okay, I went, I got, I got tested for the flu on such and such a date and I got the flu shot. Then they'll match, I mean, it's done fairly likely, at least closer to the end of the flu season. So we don't really have those numbers. I mean, they're still looking at, that's why CDC's numbers for nineteen, twenty are still estimates. So, you know, it's best guess, it's, it is a protection, somewhere between sixty and seventy percent is what I hear, most flu vaccines are. I got a flu shot one year and got the flu, but I was not vaccinated for the flu that I actually got. So we're hoping that it's a good match.
And how long does it take to develop those flu shots, so they know what's going on in the other side of the world?
Takes about six months, it's egg, egg-based vaccine development.
And is there any, I know pepper, 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 pepper. The flu vaccine, because that triggers a bit of a response, right, to build antibodies, the shot anyway, is that?
It's, it's not, it's not live vaccine, so it does not make you sick, but.
Right. Does it, does it, again, this is, you know, it's so hard to find truth right now. Well, you can always find truth. Is there any concern in your group or your sphere that, okay, if you get the flu shot, that somehow while that's doing its work, your immune system's down a little bit, so potentially?
You're more exposed.
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that question, Commissioner Beer, I could find out.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to ask questions that people have on their minds.
I think my biggest question is, you know, here we are, coming to the holiday season, you know?
And indoor season for us.
Indoor season, all the kids are going to come home from college and people are coming over and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I've never been a huge.
A lot of mingling and.
There's going to be a lot. But I think we did a public, or at least for staff, and then it went public, a flu vaccine, which I never gotten one before, but I'm like, all right, I'm going to do this thing, I only cried once, it wasn't too bad. But the candy cane at the end, no, kidding. But I did get it, I did get it. But I'm just curious if there's any data or within your professional experience or against fear of influence that there's any talk or chatter or truth that could help people make good decisions.
Commissioner Mayor, I wrote down the question and I can get back to you on that.
And I have no motive for that, I'm just asking questions that people have asked.
No, it's, it's a good question. And to your point, Commissioner Wolf, I would suggest that if you're having people in your house that aren't in your household, that you have them wear masks. We, especially college kids. If you look at the states in Minnesota, who's got really high rates right now? In those counties, a lot of them have colleges and we know that there's quite a few outbreaks related to colleges across the country.
Couple beds out to the barn, right, is that what that's for?
With, with your livestock.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
With the livestock.
Zip line the turkey to them, perfect.
The crops.
Any other questions?
Fun and exciting as always, right?
It's.
How about Zoom? Any questions out there in Zoom land? Looking for the, for the unmute, I'm not seeing it.
No question, no question.
Any more questions here?
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Good stuff, thanks for coming.
See you next month.
Oh, we always have so many questions and this thing is just, man, the answers are, again, not from you, just from the, the world we're living in is just short on answers. So thank you for coming here every month and just giving us the latest update and the next hopscotch that we get to live with.
Thank you, and as always, you don't have to wait a whole month to ask a question.
Right.
Feel free to drop me an email or pick up the phone and.
It's always awesome.
Always available, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to eight point two, apparently there's an election going on, so we're going to receive an update on the twenty twenty general election process update, said that twice. Cindy.
Is that the shooting?
I think it is, I think it is, yeah. Do believe.
What, what?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Morning.
How's everybody doing today?
Really good.
Living the dream?
Really good.
I would think so. Well, I'm here just to give you a brief update, this isn't going to take, you know, a long time. So hopefully, depending about how many questions you have, we'll see where we go from here. But a couple of things that I wanted to, just to update you on was where are we at with judge recruitment? We heard a lot about that early on.
Yeah.
We heard a lot of our judges are those folks that are at risk. And what does this mean for us being able to hold an election? So we had, Leslie had sent out a big email to like the entire senior leadership saying, mark off your calendars because if we need you, this is going to be your priority. Additionally, I just want to let you know what, what our election stats of today. You've heard a lot of media outbursts on, on where absentee is and I'm not going to talk all about the political environment nor do I care about that, but all I want to tell you about is where, what do we see downstairs and how are we addressing that? Back around the May timeframe, the Secretary of State sent out a bunch of news press and they've published this on many different occasions saying we need election judges. How do we get the word out? Scott County has done a media campaign, both social media, on our website and any other avenue we can, on stating the need for election judges as has, I want to say, all the metro counties and the majority of counties across the state. The other thing that, that the Secretary of State has done is just recently, you may have received another absentee ballot application in the mail and that was actually sent by the Secretary of State, well, there's, it may have been, you might, might have received five or eight of them right by now.
Right, right.
But they did it based upon anybody, any voter who had not already requested one, where the majority of these other public outreach organizations send out mass, whether you voted already and it's been accepted and we keep get, these voters keep getting these over and over again. So we'll talk a little bit about what do our voters think about all that. So to talk about the election judge recruitment, Julie has on multiple occasions reached out to Oliver City and our township clerk saying, what are your needs? We hear our senior leadership saying, do I still need to mark this date off on my calendar or are we good to go? So we have, because we've done this massive campaign statewide, our response has been tremendous. In our elections inbox, we will generally get five to eight applications to be an election judge. Now, they do not need to be an election judge in the precinct that they live. As long as they're a registered voter, they can actually be a judge anywhere in the, in, in the state of Minnesota. The Secretary of State reached out to us on multiple occasions saying, Hannupin County is claiming they have about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred Democratic judges who still want to work, who don't really have a location. So if you need them, let us know and we will provide a list of Democratic judges. We act forward this information all the time to our city and our township clerks. And the one thing that I keep cautioning them on is just because you have your eight, that you always have eight or maybe you only have five, but this time you have eight for cleaning and social distancing and those other types of tasks that need to be adhered to as you're running some type of an election and getting people together that congregate. I said, do you have reserves? Because we know come election day, there are going to be people who either just don't show or they're going to be sick or they're going to have some other type of absentee, absenteeism that's, that they didn't plan on. So this is what the response that we have had to date. Julie asked me to kind of maybe poke these folks again to say, we're not really getting a big response. And so for us to plan and be able to help you, you need to let us know. So these folks have, have replied to us. I really was more interested, interested a lot in Shakopee as well because they claim that they need a hundred and twenty judges for all their polling locations and I'm not entirely certain where they're at. And Savage too says, you know, sure, her comment to me was, I, I know that I have enough Republican judges, excuse me, Democrat judges, I just don't have enough Republican judges, so if you could garner any of those, send them my way. Any applications that we get within our elections inbox, we forward to these clerks right away so they can reach out and they communicate. And on those application interest forums, it does state that they have to claim their party affiliation. Now, there are some who will write a little note on there saying it's none of your business, but they know when the ju, when the clerk calls them and we let them up to them to tell them why they have to, they have to. If they have a, a party affiliation, they have to claim it. So this is what we know, we know it looks like we're in pretty good shape from at least these folks. We're going to continue to poke the rest of them to say you really need to let us know. Not, not, more so for our folks to kind of alleviate their schedules and let them get on with their daily work if they can, if they can free them. Not, not, um, more so for our folks to kind of alleviate their schedules and let them get on with their daily work if they can, if they can free themselves up. But it really is not the county's responsibility to staff the polls, we also know that. So as much as I poke them, they really don't have to respond to us, but we wanna be there to help.
Yeah, yeah.
But we did have, had a really big outpouring support from our voters, who said, I will be an election judge, so that is really great news, because because we didn't have caucuses, that's generally where these parties get their judges. Where are we at? So look at our registration count, just from where we left off at the primary to where we are at today. Big out push, big level of outreach to say, if you haven't registered to vote, do so. And do it before you have election day, because it's gonna be a lot quicker for you to get through, otherwise you're gonna have to register at the polls. And we would always prefer of order to be pre-registered, so they've gone through the vetting process with the Social Security Administration, the courts, to make sure that they don't have any type of a felony on their record, as well as the, a D and B, to make sure that their driver's license, if they supply it, matches the D and B record. We have to cut those registrations off twenty days before the election, so we know that October twelfth is, is really quick, uh, uh, quickly coming upon us, that's next Monday. So this week is really going to be the last week for us to get those voter registrations in. So if you're ever out amongst the public, um, that's something, of course, we're always looking to push, is the deadline is looming, so please get that done sooner than later.
Was there a, um, like in the last day or two, some states cut that off, or was that a different category?
Some states don't have an election day registration.
Okay, okay, okay.
So they, every state has different rules.
So I just wanted to, like, I, I heard that, I'm like, oh, wait, what did I just hear? Um, so for us, for people in Scott County, they still have until the twelfth.
In the state of Minnesota, twenty days prior to the election is when we cut it off.
Got it.
Or they can do it on that day.
Or they can still do it on that day, um, and their ballot will get counted, and if for some reason there's an issue with their registration, that they don't pass the muster test, that's when we send that up to the attorney's office for, for, uh, review. Generally, they'll send us to the city or the city investigators, or maybe the sheriff's office to investigate it prior to them putting a real eye on it. If you look at your ballot request for the primary, that number mirrored, and you'll see this in the next slide, the primary mirrored, um, a lot of what we do generally for a general election in the past. The one thing it didn't, that it doesn't align with is, we'll have like fourteen thousand ballots maybe requested, and about eleven to twelve thousand of them will get approved. In this case, there were a lo, almost eleven five, eleven thousand five hundred that actually requested the ballot, but only seventy seven fifty six actually returned them. And of that, there's a portion that weren't accepted for numerous reasons, because they didn't comply with all the rules and regs, and didn't supply the information that they needed. Now, when you look at the, at ballots for the general, we have over thirty thousand requests, so we're knocking up on that thirty one thousand already, as of yesterday. And we know that what we see is generally about a, the, the number has reduced, but it's generally around the two hundred and fifty per day. Over a weekend, will generally be more at about that six or seven hundred. Our heaviest periods notoriously, or historically, have been the last two weeks. People can, uh, vote the last week, direct balloting, so they can go into an absentee ballot location, and they can make sure that their ballot goes right into the tabulator. And the week before that, it's all of a sudden, these people are like, I don't think I can make the polls, I've got college kids who are coming home, or whatever the reason is, it's like that last two week push, or they're just undecided. So we have thirty two point seven percent of the entire voter population today that has already requested a ballot. Of those, almost ten thousand have been accepted, so it is a big push.
So Cindy, you said, uh, Mr. Chip, about two hundred thirty seven were not accepted of that seventy five nineteen and two. What's the biggest reason, and do you tell them why, so that they can?
They do get notification on why, and some of these.
Are they mad? Are they mad about it, or they like?
Some of them are very irritated with us, they're thinking that we're being pushy, or that we are rejecting their ballot because they voted one party or the other. What they don't know is we have no idea what party they voted. And we really don't care what party they vote, all we care about is, does this absentee ballot envelope that comes through align with all of the requirements of the statute, such as you have to provide a identifying number, either your driver's license or the last four of your social, you as a voter must sign that envelope. If you're non-registered, you must have a witness that checks a box that says, how did they validate your identity? And they too must sign, and they must be either a notary, or they have to be a registered voter within the state of Minnesota. So if those don't all comply, we'll have some people write their social security number down, last four, rather than their driver's license, and if their driver's license isn't stored on their voter record, well, we could jump to one other thing like the voter registration and catch it. They provide us with an inadequate ID number that we cannot validate, and we reject. Maybe they forget to sign it, maybe the witness forgets to sign it. Maybe the witness is a notary and they don't have the notary stamp on it. There's all different reasons why they may get rejected. When that happens, we send them a letter, and we send them a replacement ballot if, if they're gonna have time to get it done. So we send them a replacement ballot along with this form letter, saying, why was your ballot rejected? I would say out of the ones that we reject, one out of every hundred will call, and they'll just be mad as a woodhennen at us, and, you know, we just try to explain the rules, and there's nothing that we as a county employee doing elections administration can do to mitigate that, it is the requirements.
Cause I see that as three percent of, of the people that, that two hundred thirty seven of the, that's about three percent. If that's the case, and it comes to November fourth, and somebody won or lost by a couple votes.
A lot of these people, they'll go to the polls. It doesn't mean that they don't vote, but if they're rejected.
Instead of because they've been right, and they have the time, so if this isn't coming, no, probably November fourth.
Well, it could, now in this case, remember.
See, there's where the problem.
The rules, uh, for this election is seven days post-election.
Yeah.
Any ballot that's postmarked on election day or before has to be counted, if it doesn't get rejected. The voter still gets voter history, but their ballot won't be counted if they don't align, uh, with everything that's required on that outer envelope, which is why drop balloting is a good idea, if you don't wanna go to the polls, go to an A B location, because now we have four of them, excuse me, five of them. We have Shakopee City, Parle City, Savage City, Jordan City, and our Public Works Building, five locations where prior to the year twenty twenty, I don't know how many of you saw the lines down the sidewalk and people waiting an hour to come through absentee.
And what did you call that? You called that at what site?
Absentee ballot locations?
Did you use A B?
Absentee ballot, right.
Yeah, okay. Because early voting.
What is the hours of that, of the absentee, where they can come up to the Shakopee, Parle, Savage, and Bell playing, you said?
Jordan.
Jordan, sorry.
The Shakopee, Savage, and Parle align with our hours, they're eight o'clock to four thirty, Monday through Friday. Jordan City, County, City, um, Hall hours are eight thirty to five o'clock, so that's their time. Starting this Saturday, Scott County absentee location will be open from nine to one. We don't need to be open, but we're gonna do that for the next four Saturdays. Nine to one for the next three, with a nine to three, the Saturday follow, or ten to three, the Saturday follow. The Saturday before the election is ten to three.
That's at Public Works.
That's at Public Works. Now, the Saturday before the election, all these absentee ballot locations need to be open. The cities have decided they don't wanna be open on these other Saturdays, and we just really need to make sure people know. We sent that mass mailer out to every household residence that seemed to have a lot of great comments coming from it. People were extremely happy that we have, number one, informed, number two, expanded, and number three, tried to make it every way possible for them to come through and vote in the most safe manner, for both them and our, and the people that we have working at the, at the locations.
There's no excuse not to vote, just.
And, but not only that, but remember, we also deployed, um, ballot drop-off locations in the city halls that are conducting absentee, and then in, in the libraries that are not conducting absentee, so, as well as having a drop-off at the Public Works Building, so there are eight locations that if you say, I don't trust USPS, or I don't think my ballot's gonna get there, or I wanna hand it to a physical person, it is not just a drop box where they can put it in and leave, well, they can, they can refuse the judge to look at it. What we like to do is say, let us take a look at it, make sure that everything aligns, so it's not gonna get rejected. It's for their benefit, really not ours.
Yeah, it's not counting, it's just.
It's just proofing it, their ballot against what's in the state's system. And saying, okay, go ahead and put it in, they're not accepting it, they're not rejecting it, they're just letting them putting it in the ballot box that is locked, and only we have the keys, and so every, so often throughout the day, that ballot box is picked up, and then, and a fresh one is dropped off, and it comes right here, where then they open those ballot boxes.
And that, yeah. I assume, just for our listening public, we have protocol, it's not like, you know, any of us can just grab the key, go get the ballots, throw them in our car, go to five places on the way, it doesn't happen.
Again, only the keys are held here, and only, actually, our, our, um, absentee manager, her name is Chris Logie, she's the only one with those actual keys. I don't even have access to them.
And, and there, but there's protocol when she collects it, and recording how many and counting.
Well, the, those ballots are actually, um, brought in, two judges brought in here, and then due to CARES funding, we were able, we knew that our, our traffic was gonna be large. In the last two weeks, we have to also start opening these ballots, and we can run them through the tabulator, but they don't get tallied and, and we don't get any statistics or results until after eight o'clock on election day. But we have hired twenty seven temporary staff, generally have three, maybe two, is what we generally bring in. For this general election, we have twenty seven staff, eight of them, of course, which are deployed as ballot drop-off judges, they're all trained, as well, and then here, we have people who conduct our ballot board, where they look at that, two judges, looking at this ballot, looking at the state system and saying, does everything match? So they have to accept it, both people have to agree that that ballot gets accepted or rejected, and then it just gets locked away and put away until we can start opening, in a room that only one person, not two people have the key to, so.
Cindy, will you explain, a question that comes up is, I requested an absentee ballot, I decided to go vote in person absentee, and explain to people that you can't vote twice, how that's protected?
So when we accept a ballot, remember how we have to paper rosters in the past, and you had to go in, you had to find your name, you had to sign on the dotted line where your name is, saying you're a registered voter, or you had to register to vote. Now, we be, we got poll pads instead, but regardless of whatever technology, paper or, or, um, a poll pad that you use, on that voter record, it is marked that they voted, it has an A B right next to their name, and with our technology, it won't let that, let that voter pass. Now, they may claim, I did not vote, and in that case, the head judge usually calls us, and we go and we keep all the envelopes, and we can find out where we've accepted this, and say, oh, no, you did vote on this day, oh, yeah, I totally forgot. Now, the problem comes, so we have that voter marked, they can't get any further than the front, that, that door and saying, sorry, you've already voted, your vote is already counted. Now, let's just say that you received an absentee ballot, and you have it in your hands, cause you asked for one, you made an application, and then you decided, nah, I think I'm gonna go to an absentee ballot location, that judge then spoils the ballot that you received at your home, so that, that number, and there's a specific number on that ballot, we will never accept it, it will come through as a rejected ballot or spoiled ballot. Then you can vote in person at that absentee location, so if you've received one and you change your mind, you wanna go to a location, you can do that too. But if you received one and voted it, unless prior to that last fourteen days, you ask to have your ballot rejected, once we start opening, you can't reject. But we can always reject up to the last two weeks before the election, we can spoil that ballot and reject, and, and let it be gone, so you can go to the polls. And that's the difficulty with people saying, well, what if these people retract their ballots? One year, we had five people out of all the voters, so far this year, we've had this many, zero.
So, how's this work? Just because people are all up in arms, and it's gonna be quite an election. Let's say I put my absentee ballot in the mail the day before the election, and then I go vote on election day. So I assume that my vote on election day is the one that's gonna count, cause this one is gonna come two days after election day, you're gonna open it, or will they both be invalidated?
Nope, you're, it, even though we've mailed one, as long as we haven't received it, your voter record says that you have not voted, cause you really haven't.
Right.
So you go to the polls, they let you vote.
Yep.
Okay. Even like on election day, when we get all these ballots in, let's just say, we get the ballot for you, Commissioner Beer, at two o'clock in the afternoon, but you went to the polls at seven o'clock in the morning, and the roster at that time said, you know, that we knew of, said you didn't vote. Before we, as a board, once the election day process opens, anything that we receive in the mail cannot be accepted until we've got validation from the polling location that you did not come in and vote. So again, there's, there's a couple steps. Now, with technology, that's much easier, saying, here's our list, boom, it hits them, the judges actually confirm, yep, 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 everything aligns, and then we reject the one we get in the mouth. Once your vote is put into a tabulator, whether you direct ballot the last week before, at an absentee location, or on election day, once the ballot gets put into the tabulator, you cannot ask for it back or have it spoiled.
So in general, all these theories on Facebook about how people can vote, vote twice, or have more than one vote counted, you have an answer for that, or why we don't allow that, right?
Correct, and, and the biggest thing is, I don't know people who have never voted absentee, that they don't know that we need that personal identifying information.
Yep.
We need your birthdate, or social, or driver's license, and a signature. So. It is, it, it's tough, because I just, and I'll give you a, just a recent example, I got, uh, a request saying, um, a gal saying, I, my vote was counted for the primary, my husband's was not voted, counted for the primary, can't happen, we either both mailed or delivered on the same day, voter fraud. So we looked, and the voter, actually, both of them were counted. I don't know, either she saw something different on the state side, or the state side had it wrong, I don't really know, it's a public display, not the actual record. So rather than just saying, did my husband's vote count, and if it wouldn't have counted, and we got it late, he would've got a letter saying, we received your ballot late. So in that case, and then, um, you know, they both got their ballots for the general, but she's like, we wanna confirm that our votes are gonna count this time, both of them, and is this some way that the DFL party is trying to take, have us reject these ballots? Again, what people need to know is, we have no idea what your political affiliation is. We care that the statutes are all followed, and that we can confirm readily that you are who you say you are, based upon the information that we have. So. Any other questions? The last thing I just wanted to do is to provide you just some historical data. Again, these ballots from twenty two, two thousand twelve to twenty eighteen are the ones that we actually accepted. Those are the absentee ballots that we counted in those elections, as you remember, we're around, almost at ten thousand already that we've accepted, with a whole lot of them still hanging out there, and every day, outside of Tuesdays, for some reason, we don't know why, we generally get at least those, those bins that are, uh, maybe what, uh, a foot deep by maybe twenty inches long, full of ballots. So they're coming in fast and furious, which is great. Uh, we have had a real high response of, um, for Yocava ballots, which are overseas voters, either military or people who are stationed permanently or temporarily overseas, but they are a US citizen. So we've had a really big, um, uh, turnout for those folks as well, which is great. Initially, when, when this all. Initially, when, when this all started, the Secretary of State stated that they thought there'd be about forty five percent of our voters that would vote by absentee. Now, we're already almost at thirty one thousand. We have a month to go. With the biggest push generally in the last two weeks. Now, maybe that'll subside a little bit, but what we know is hopefully at the polls. We will not have these lines that are forever long because people are choosing to do what's safe for them. And make their choice regardless of whatever anybody else tells them, we want them to be safe. And so that's our utmost goal in all of this. There you go. Everything you wanted to know unless.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
Well, that was brief.
Hey, John, I had to answer questions, Commissioner.
You are being compared to Kevin Ellsworth's definition of brief, so.
I could have been briefer if there was no questions, so as long as nobody asked a question.
And the bummer is he muted his screen after he said that because you can't see it. We can see him laughing, but you couldn't hear him.
I, I see him laughing too. Anyway.
Mike, Mike was daring, Commissioner Beer was daring me to ask for data back to seventeen seventy six.
Paybacks. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Keep it, uh, keep it strong and secure, I know you will. Um, all right, moving on to item number nine, committee reports and commissioner updates. I'll start to my right, Commissioner Wettman-Brucki, please.
Thank you. Um, our last board meeting was uh September fifteenth and following it, we met as a regional rail authority. Um, on September sixteenth, uh attended the Scott County Extension Committee meeting. Um, many reports about how they're reaching people virtually, doing their programs. And then also how they're looking at next year's budget based on the um budget uh target cuts we gave them. Uh, September seventeenth, um had several meetings, first uh MELSA board meeting. Much of the discussion of that meeting had to deal with um the MELSA lease for the space, for the office space uh was up. And trying to figure out if we need as much space, what we can do, they, they and ended up doing a shorter term lease and then doing a space study and. Seeing about if people can work at home, that type of thing. Also that afternoon, um had the AMC Health and Human Services Committee meeting, uh working on our legislative priorities. And then that evening was the Scott County Library Board of Trustees meeting. On September eighteenth, in the morning, had the Dakota Scott Workforce Development Board meeting. Just hearing about current, current numbers in Scott and Dakota County for unemployment, challenges that employers are having. Um, how our career force centers are up and running by appointment and some, um, and then a lot of virtual work. That afternoon was the final AMC Health and Human Services Committee meeting of the week. Usually we have a policy conference, so instead we had three afternoons of virtual meetings. And then on the evening of Sep- September eighteenth, we had the Scott County Farm Bureau Annual Meeting. Um, out at a farm near Lakeville. Uh, nice attendance um by candidates running for political office, recognition of a hundred and fifty year old farm in Scott County. And then their business meeting. Um, on September twenty second was the Live, Learn, Earn Ed- Educational Prep Committee. Of course, um, the, the donations of the e-readers was a big subject and how that. Those hopefully will be used at screenings when parents bring their children at age three to be screened before school. Because that's really at, at the time we're looking at getting them in the family's hands. Once, once kids get into kindergarten, they're all getting devices now from their schools. But, but we're really hoping to impact that, that pre-reading, the ability of families to, to start with that early literacy. Um, September twenty fourth had the WECAN um Steering Committee meeting and that evening, the Jordan Commercial Club. On September twenty eighth, in the morning, uh Leslie and I met with the Mayor of Belle Plaine and City Administrator of Belle Plaine, just to touch base on. Joint projects, some, some road projects, other things going on and in this, the city that the county needs to be aware of. September twenty ninth, of course, we had our um tour of the new building and, and our board workshop. Uh, then the ERTS ribbon cutting. And then in the late afternoon, the Scott County Mental Health Advisory, our local advisory council had a listening session where they invited. Uh candidates for public office to, to learn about the um activities going on in the county. To um promote mental health and help people live with mental illness. October first had Justice Steering Committee meeting, a lot of the conversation there. Um, was about the um new courtroom in the LEC and just also. Uh, you know, the court's backlog based on being shut down for some months, how they're catching up, what kind of things are being done to, to make sure that people are kept up safe. But we can move, move things through the court system. Also on October first had WECAN Subcommittee meeting. And then um in the evening, Helena Township is still meeting uh by phone. So I called in and participated in their meeting. One thing they wanted to pass on was sincere thanks um to the county. For how quickly we were able to get uh Jersey barriers up on Alton Avenue. If you remember, Helena Township's a township that has road issues due to beaver dams. Still an issue.
Making me homesick.
But we were um thankfully, you know, this is the way of scale, able to help quickly and, and Joe Weeden and his team got those barriers up there. To hope, you know, keep that road somewhat um travelable, but, but lots of work to be done there in a difficult situation. When you have a private landowner, beaver dams, township roads, DNR, it's a complicated situation that this township's been wrestling with for some time. Um, that's the end of my report.
Awesome.
Can I just add to that? You know, I found this out through the whole beaver thing. They leave a scent, you know, and they do.
Oh, yeah.
And it can stay for seven years. And other beavers, it's like a homing beacon and they just, they've cleared them out a couple times, but they keep coming, so.
Yep.
More than you needed to know.
Well, they get kicked out of the house and they got to go someplace and that's where they.
That's Call me Cliff.
Uh, but I know a guy. Anyway, uh, all right, Commissioner Beer, we will go to online land.
Okay, I'll give you a brief update.
Wait, brief, did you wait? He said brief, based on the last, I don't know.
Okay, on the twenty second, I believe it was twenty second, uh participated in a joint Zoom meeting with Credit River to discuss cost share possibilities. With their pending city, becoming a city with our uh highway project through their town. Uh, no resolution to continue the discussion. Uh, let's see, on the twenty eighth, I participated in a conference call with MinDOT about the Highway thirteen, Dakota Avenue project, with the Highway eighteen's. Breakwater Study Project. On the twenty ninth, of course, the workshop that participated in. And on the first of uh October, uh I participated in about two thirds of the Transportation Committee meeting before the uh length on our Skype meeting. Uh, picking me out, I couldn't pick that dance. Uh, that's pretty much is my report, Mr. Chair.
Sounds good, sounds good. Uh, Commissioner Ulrich.
Uh, yeah, I have a number of meetings, I'm going to go in depth on just a few. Um, all my meetings except one were Zoom or some other form of technology. On the sixteenth, a tab meeting, uh each solicitation, we get about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and ninety three million dollars to distribute to the region for. Different projects. We're on the. Sort of the bubble, we, we are in danger of not getting a project uh through this solicitation, uh on the. Highway Safety Improvement Project, um, so we're, we're working that, we're trying to make sure we get a project, but we're not, we're in trouble on this solicitation, I would say. On the seventeenth, Greater MSP, later that day, the one sixty nine quarter Coalition Executive Committee, on the twenty eighth, the first. T O Service Delivery Committee, I have a few things to report on here. Data analyst position that was funded through scale, looks like we're kind of reversing course and probably going to fund that and, and not lose the momentum. That was gained with a person that was hired but has left. So they're probably going to begin the process, this, this, so to be determined finally, but it looks like that'll be going forward. Um, the police are looking for some uh mobile field force funding and organization. What that means is they're looking for equipment for all the officers in case there was a massive event that they needed to respond to. And also uniform training, that how that would be funded and what that would look like is being discussed. Perry also gave a five G update for the uh, the county. Uh, the twenty second, the Chair Vice Chair, as well as later that day, the S T A met. Uh, to discuss how to respond to the Met Council, uh the Blue Ribbon Commission. It's crazy that S T A is going to get an opportunity to speak at the Blue Ribbon Commission, but it's only getting given five minutes. Which is. Short, uh, I don't know if I'll say five minutes, but we've been working on a, a two-page document that's pretty tight and pretty good for that meeting. Uh, the twenty third, the Greater MSP, uh the Commissioner meeting. Twenty fourth, meeting with the Savage Mayor and Administrator, later that same, the Fish Board of Directors meeting. On the first, monthly meeting with Liz Zemulian and the Transportation Committee. Uh, we talked about Dakota County, uh, you know, somebody project update, that's the freight project and we're trying to figure out how to engage. Uh, it was Savage in a way that we get full feedback and we kind of arrive at the best and wisest decision together. I don't think it's going to look like the three board meetings with the Prior Lake, in, in the process of their downtown project. But we may have one workshop, I hope, together, uh, bad ideas back and forth. The Live, Learn, Earn Transportation Committee uh has really not been meeting much or not been meeting. And we're proposing that the Unified Transit Management. Management Group, um, they're coming with a, a proposal for uh. That was that that group will become the Live, Learn, Earn Transportation Committee in the future. A little bit same to the Fish Executive Committee and then Scale on the second, the Scale Executive Committee. And we're talking about legislative priorities and they're still batting back and forth the idea of hiring a lobbyist through scale, something. I'm not a big fan of, I, I, if we did, I do think it would be a very, very part-time position. Um, I hope that they, they're not pushing for a big scale lobbyist. That's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the fifteenth, the Regional Rail, uh, on the eighteenth, the Farm Bureau had a candidates. Just like a little forum, everyone just really gave a little bit about uh where they're from and kind of about their farming background and stuff. And that was uh pretty well attended, actually. So, and the Mullen's actually got a, a hundred and fifty year uh. Farm, they're going to get a plaque and whatever, so. Very nice evening there. Uh, the twenty first, the Prior Lake City Council had a budget meeting. On the twenty second, met uh with a number of folks here uh on our Muriel that we're going to have a little workshop on here next. On the twenty third, Minnesota Mosquito Control, Metropolitan Mosquito Control, excuse me. We met Elk in the Market, uh, met with the mayor uh that afternoon. On the twenty fourth, Credit River had a uh like a question and answer type of a deal. Uh, then Elk in the Market had a city budget meeting. On the twenty eighth, the administrat- I met with the administrator. Um, and then we had a Soan Water Conservation District uh tour. That uh, actually I, I thought pretty good at um, you know, some of the folks that we have that Lake, McMan Lake that we've, I've talked about that. Keeps rising, it's like Devil's Lake up in North Dakota. And so this uh, looking for an outlet for some water. And um, it's taking up a lot of the boat launch, it's creeping up on the properties and into their septic and, you know, it's going to kill trees, so. Really like to get something done with that um, uh, quickly. So also had another Credit River meeting that night. You know, a lot of uh questions and stuff with this uh becoming a city, so. Um, hopefully by January, it was, it's either yes or no with that. Then we had the workshop and the tour on the twenty ninth and then the ERTS had the ribbon cutting. And the LEC, as Commissioner Brucki had mentioned, um, just with candidates, just a informational type thing. On the first, uh, had a Muriel, another Muriel meeting. Uh, and then Credit River last night at their uh monthly meeting, Cedar Lake had a, uh, their uh monthly meeting. Lot of talk on there uh about uh the helicopter pad and um, you know, lots. You know, I took up a, a good chunk of the meeting and I got, I've got many calls, I know the administrator, I know planning and zoning. Uh, I know some of us have gotten many calls on this helicopter. I mean, we've been, we really need to get this thing right for these, uh, these people. And um, and I agree um with this morning, uh, the young lady came in here and just talked about, um. You know, how would you like it if somebody put this into your backyard and, yeah, that's, well. Probably wouldn't, so anyway, um, that is the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, many of these are duplicate, but on the fifteenth, Regional Rail Authority. Um, sixteenth was extension, you know, everyone's wrestling with budgets and there's some attrition going on there that might help that cause. Twenty second Chair Vice Chair, also that same day, uh, kind of a joint mini meeting with Credit River talking about, as was alluded to, some um cost participation. And some highway projects, road projects. Twenty third, the Scott County Prevention Coalition, uh, really talked about how um, you know, prescription drugs in the wrong hands. Um, is a really, really big deal, all things that we knew, um, but you start putting numbers to it and it's like, yikes. Um, plus all the stuff that's already illegal. Um, twenty fourth, Fish, twenty ninth, ERTS ribbon cutting, um, great to see that building is unbelievable. Had put a pep in my step just walking in the door. Um, looking forward to, that is a, what a win-win. A place in our own backyard for people to go that need that kind of help and um at less expense versus what our options are now, so what a great win-win. Um, also, I had a great opportunity to, to uh chit chat with the Dakota County Chair, Mike Slavik. Um, great discussion, all things on the table, you know, how can we collaborate more, what can we think about doing together, do we merge? Yeah, I even said that, you know, just nothing's off the table, right? How can we do things better for taxpayers? That was a good discussion. Um, also had the G C two building tour, fun to see that thing coming along, be a great workspace, um, even in social distancing days. Uh, on the fifth, um, Prior Lake City Council, they're wrestling with what do they do with their ten plus miles of private roadways within their city? When their public utilities are located under them, so all fun things, uh, you know. We're in these kind, kind of positions, we can wrestle with helicorps or utilities and private roads and all that fun stuff. So with that, that concludes my report and look down to my left, on the administrator.
I just have a couple things, Mr. Chair. One is on your agenda, the October twenty seventh, um, upcoming meeting, the workshop.
Oh, yeah.
That's ten o'clock, so please note that it's not nine, it's ten because Chair Vice Chair goes from eight to ten that morning. And then the other thing was, um, you had asked about the functioning of the tunnel and then that would be open when we took the tube last week. As of today, it's fully functional for law enforcement to be using.
Thanks.
Um, so that is open now and they're able to use that.
It's a big deal.
And my other updates, um, you received from Cindy and Lisa, we've done those quite often in mine and decided they were worthy enough this time to just have their own presentation, so.
All right, looking down to my right, anything we need to recess for attorney-client privilege?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we have nothing we need to meet.
Another, another good report. Um, so before we adjourn, we will, following this uh meeting, meet in the workshop setting for a proposed mural design. For the building construction project and an agenda management software, I don't know if we're going to look at that a little bit more. Um, but otherwise with that, we are at point number.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, there we go.
Second.
And we got a second. Any discussion, guessing not? We'll use that pause to say there isn't. Deb, take us out.
Commissioner Wettman-Brucki.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
He gave us an aye, there he is, there he is.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.